To order the emergency meeting of the Chesapeake Beach Town Council. I note that all of the council members are present. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Eric. Thank you. All right, we you have council members who have the agenda in front of you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Or say aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it. This is the opportunity for the public to make any comment they would like to on the purpose, you know, the emergency meeting, which is a limited scope here. But is there anybody that would like to make any public comment on any item on this emergency meeting agenda? Hearing none, we will move forward. The we will now introduce and vote on an emergency ordinance E zero dash two five dash O two, an emergency ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, amending the adopted utility fund budget for the fiscal year from July one, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, to provide funds for temporary relief for water and sewer account holders in the third and fourth quarters of FY twenty twenty five, and to provide funds for professional services to assist the town in assessing the rate structure for the water and sewer billing rate analysis for twenty twenty five. Uh, council comments, questions?
Councilman Schuels, who sponsored the ordinance, want to speak first?
Uh, I I don't have any comments. It's what we discussed at the town working session, so it would be three hundred thirty five thousand dollars to provide a twenty percent credit and then up to a hundred thousand dollars for professional services for all the items that we wish to see with regards to water and sewer rates.
Thank you.
Okay, and so I just have some clarifying questions, and I'd like to offer an amendment to clarify the wording. My first question is about the title. So it says to assist the town in assessing the rate structure for the water and sewer billing and rate analysis for fiscal year twenty twenty five. And I assume that we would be getting a rate analysis for our upcoming budget cycle, which would be for fiscal year twenty twenty six. So what I'm asking the council to support when I propose my amendment is an either or scenario. We're funding this, but while they do the work, they can do a rate analysis for for fiscal year twenty twenty six. I just think that's more clear that we're doing it for fiscal year twenty twenty six. Is was that the intent of what we're trying to do? We're trying to get a rate analysis and recommendations and all these list of things that we want to do so that we can put the proper structure in place for the next fiscal year. Is that did I understand our intent correctly?
Um, yeah, I mean, so this would be the so. The first part is the twenty percent credit, right? So that's a short term relief. And then the second phase two is to do the water and sewer audit, the full scale. And then there's an ask within there is like, what would we be able to have to allow us to be informed as we go through the budget cycle? So we have, what, two, two and a half months to work with the vendor that selected and say, we would like some information regarding, you know, how we're going to decision on water and sewer rates. Now, I think when, you know, new gens here, when they present, there's fair questions of timelines, like I I don't know if everything proposed in phase two and then what we're looking for in the out of scope section of phase three is realistic in three months, nor would we want a rushed assessment. But I I think, you know, that's a question that we can absolutely ask in regards to timelines. But, you know, they're well aware of the ask to support twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six decisioning for budget purposes.
Okay, so so I would appreciate that support. I don't think that this amendment alters the goal. It it simply clarifies that we can include in our questions of them. Items for twenty twenty six and the twenty twenty six budget is probably going to be different because there's going to be a different number of capital improvements and a lot of different things that we might need to consider for the rate structure in twenty twenty six. So that's that's my first question.
Comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. Um, yes, I I think, I guess, I understand, I understand. Councilwoman Blackwell, your point, but I think it's covered with just saying that the water and sewer billing and rate analysis for fiscal year twenty twenty five. I think we've made it clear and it's further specified that what the rate analysis is would be applied in the upcoming fiscal year, which would be twenty twenty six. I don't think we need to earmark that twenty twenty six as well as twenty twenty five because, I mean, if if they, assuming they make a recommendation that we do X, Y, and Z, we would apply that in fiscal year twenty twenty six. And that if we wouldn't, I mean, what what's the whole point of having the rate analysis? Not just to finish out fiscal year twenty twenty five, but to apply it in the upcoming year. So that's that's my thought.
I would also add to that. I think what you're describing, though, is more appropriate in the response to the proposal and where we would say that we need these task orders to be prioritized versus calling out here because what we're calling out here is just the ability to fund this. This doesn't dictate what the, you know, we can go back and forth on the items identified in the proposal and still have those discussions because because phase two, even with Nugent, has still not been funded, right? This is purely just to give us the funding source in order to initiate that. So I I still think that at the end of the day, that's a contractual discussion, not necessarily the EO.
So maybe we could just cross out for twenty twenty five and then we just have water and sewer billing and rate analysis.
That was my that was going to be my suggestion also. I think that's.
Okay.
Chop off what.
Chop off the specificity of fiscal year twenty twenty five.
Are you proposing that as an amendment to the?
I will, but I have a few more questions first and then I'll make the whole amendment.
All right.
Similarly, in your packet and paragraph eight of the whereas as statements, I'm just looking for.
You have, we haven't, you haven't proposed a motion. I know you're going to do it at the end of this, but you should. Don't we need to have a motion to look at this and then we'll second it and then we'll have the discussion?
Well, I, okay. Yeah, I my question was more to ensure that my intent is equal to the council's intent, which everybody confirms. So my second question about intent, and then I'll make a motion to for the, thank you, Kath Kathleen. My second question about intent is down here in section one, two of the ordaining statements. And so for me, the sentence could read a couple of ways. And so my motion will be looking to clarify it. Hopefully, we all have the same intent. It says for professional services to determine the most appropriate method of assessing water and sewer operational cost, comma, including but not limited to. So when the sentence is structured that way. The way I read it is that assessing of the operational cost is what we're talking about. And then the including is all this list of things. So my motion has to do with reorganizing this sentence so that we understand that the entire list is on equal footing and that the including statement isn't subordinate to operational costs, that we're just assessing all these things with our new contractor. Is that intent correctly and understood by me of the rest of the council? The intent for the the money that we've we're allocating is to do all of the things, not under the scope of just assessing operational costs, but under the scope of of doing them and of their own right.
I understand what you're saying, and I I agree with you.
Okay.
I mean, whatever gets us.
I think I gave you one. So with with that knowledge, I can make my motion. So I would like to propose a motion to amend.
Emergency.
Ordinance. Executive, um, emergency ordinance twenty five dash O two. As followed, in the title of the ordinance, strike the words for fiscal year twenty twenty five. So that the title reads. An ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, amending the adopted utility fund budget for the fiscal year from July one, twenty twenty four to June thirty, twenty twenty five, to provide funds for the temporary relief for water and sewer account holders in the third and fourth quarters of fiscal year twenty twenty five, and to provide funds for professional services to assist the town in assessing the rate. Structure for the water and sewer billing and rate analysis. Period. Yeah. And then part B of my motion would be to strike the word foregoing.
Do you prefer to do them one at a time? So we can just.
Would that be easier for everybody?
That would be easier.
Okay, so do I need to make that motion again?
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second, and it basically is to strike the end of that for twenty twenty five. And all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. That part's done.
Thank you. Part B. And the whereas statement. In paragraph eight, I'd like to delete the word foregoing because it was confusing. And so the paragraph would read, whereas the mayor and town council further wish to provide funds for retaining professional services for the assessment of the rate structure. On the end, it's literally just deleting a word that has two meanings.
Good with that.
Second it.
You have a motion and a second?
Yep.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, the ayes have it. All right, go ahead.
Okay, and the third motion would be in the ordaining section of the ordinance. Section one, parentheses, two. And that motion would be. After the words professional services, strike the words to determine the most appropriate method of assessing the water and sewer operational costs and insert the words including but not limited to assessing water and sewer operational costs, so that section one, parentheses, two reads for professional services, including but not limited to assessing water and sewer operational costs and in-depth utility fund and rate analysis, utility fund management recommendations, utility billing recommendations, and EDU equivalent dwelling unit audit, a comprehensive utility infrastructure evaluation, updates to the town water and sewer manual, and recommendations related to capital connections, all aimed at optimizing the management and sustainability of the town's water and sewer system in the amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars in a new line item assigned as utility fund assessment and optimization, professional services, and so on.
Operating false analysis.
I did not leave it out on purpose.
Remember you saying that.
I said it at the beginning, including but not. Limited to assessing water and sewer. I just, I literally just rearranged it.
Have a question about.
You have a question?
So we got, we got a motion and we got a second. Do we have a discussion? Okay. I just wanted to, I just wanted to hear your rationale on not the moving, I understand the moving of the including, including but not limited to. But why do you want to strike the determine the most appropriate method?
Um, I think if you're assessing the operational costs in general, you are also determining the most appropriate method. I just think it's implied. That's the only reason I struck it. It was just easier to create the sentence.
Saying it's too wording, it's just too much redundancy?
I mean, I I'm not opposed to it. I just couldn't figure out how to make the sentence and include that phrase, and I felt like, yes, it was redundant.
All right, we have a motion and a second, right?
I have.
More comments, questions?
Um, I'm not sure. I got, I lost you after. When you were reading in-depth utility fund rate analysis, I didn't see where it went to EDU. I don't, I don't have that on my.
So it's already in the ordinance. Or it was in my original ordinance that I received in my packet. I really just picked up after I made that that.
Oh, okay.
At the beginning of the sentence, I really just picked up the rest of the sentence.
All right, any more questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Right? Now we have an amended ordinance. All in favor of, is there any discussion on the amended order, ordinance? All in favor of adoption of the emergency ordinance E zero dash twenty five dash O two as amended, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Okay, next item on the agenda. We have another emergency ordinance. Introduce and vote on emergency ordinance EO dash twenty five dash zero three, an emergency ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, amending the adopted general fund budget for the fiscal year from July one, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, transfer funds to the utility fund for temporary relief for water and sewer account holders in the third and fourth quarter of FY twenty twenty five, and to provide for professional services to assist the town in assisting assessing the rate structure for the water and sewer billing rate analysis for twenty twenty five. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
You, do we want to strike the fiscal year twenty five like we did with the first motion?
Make a motion to amend that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to amend.
Yeah, yes. And so we have a motion to strike the FY for FY twenty twenty five.
Second.
And you got a second, okay. On the motion to amend, all in favor of the motion to amend, say aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Any further discussion on the amended motion? All in favor? Okay, all in favor of the amended motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
No? I hear hearing no nos, the motion is passed. We'll now accept a motion for adjournment of the emergency session.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The ayes have, I can't imagine anybody to be opposed. Okay, next, we have the call to order, the Town Council regular meeting. We can do the pledge of allegiance again, why don't we? Let's see, whose turn would it be? I think Laura, it might be your turn.
He's the Republic. Under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Your motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. All right, this is the opportunity for the public to comment on any item that's on the published agenda, which hasn't been amended, so what you see is what you get. Are there any, is there anybody in the public that wishes to make a comment on any item on the regular town council agenda? All right, we're going to move forward. We have four sets of minutes to approve. The first set of minutes that we're seeking approval on is the February twentieth, twenty twenty five Town Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, is there a second? Okay, having been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. We need an approval, we need a motion to approve the minutes of the February twentieth, twenty twenty five Town Council closed session. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, okay, all in favor, aye? Opposed, the ayes have it. Okay. Now we want to have approved the minutes of the March eleventh Town Council work session. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you. The work session, item seven. Okay, you've seconded, is there discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, and. We now have. Pro motion, we need a motion to approve the minutes of the March eleventh, twenty twenty five Town Council closed session, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Kathleen, is there a second? Go ahead.
Um, so I sent in a question to Samelia about how do we change? How do we? Make an amendment to a closed session meeting? And I did not receive, I I didn't read your response if you sent one, I'll just put it that way.
So I I did send a response, so I will, I'll share with everyone. So generally, what happens with a closed session is if there is an amendment that you have or modification that you want to submit, you can submit those amendments to me. I can share it with the full council, understanding that you cannot reply all. Then when we get to the public meeting, you would motion to amend or accept the amendment as presented by the town administrator or distributed by the town administrator. And if everyone or there was a consensus, then you would move forward as amended. If there was not consensus, then we, it would have to be discussed in closed session because it is a closed session meeting minute question.
Okay, so I sent that last night, so I would just request that we didn't.
There's one more option.
Okay.
So the other option is if you're, if there's not consensus to accept the minutes as presented as it currently is, then you can request for. Closed session to be able to discuss an amendment of the current meeting minutes.
Okay, so we just approved the agenda. So what does that do with a request to a, for a closed session? What what are my options right now as it sits?
Going to defer to legal counsel on that.
You can't, you can't add in a closed session tonight, but you could request a close, you could defer, the council could vote to defer the approval of those minutes to allow a discussion in closed session. However, if you've sent the text of what your change is, which I understand is relatively small.
Yeah.
And 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 the council had no objection and they could. Prove that without commenting on what happened in the closed session. That could just happen, right? You could just make a motion to amend your, amend the minutes as per your communication to council, but I'm not sure it's gone to council yet, so.
Okay, well, there's no words, so that's a good thing. So I could just move to strike and without speaking, they could look at the minutes and.
They wouldn't know what you were striking.
The last paragraph of something?
The whole paragraph?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That would be clear enough. I understood the change to be smaller than that.
Well, it it is smaller, but I think that would lead to. A more revealing discussion. Right, that's what I mean. That's why I would just move to just strike the entire paragraph.
Try to do that and see.
Right, so. At this time, I'd like to state for the record that council has not seen a bond and council has not seen any permits. So please include that in the record. Well, no, that's just a statement for the record. Okay, okay, but I think it was in the work session that we. Were going to discuss that. Okay, I I don't, I'll just make a statement for the record somewhere in this meeting of that. Okay. Okay, that, okay, that was the purpose in the previous meeting. But my motion is. Well, first I'll make a motion. I motion to defer the approval of the minutes of the Town Council closed session of March eleventh, twenty twenty five. So that I can offer my amendment to the council in one of the methods described by the town lawyer.
Your second?
Second that.
All in favor of the motion just presented, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
It is a tie, I believe. Sorry?
I was just saying.
Three and three. You're making me think about this. Whatever we need to do to move it to a closed session to amend it, I I'm in favor of that. Do I vote yes or no in that case? Okay, I vote yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Okay, thank you. All right, moving right along. The next item on the agenda, item nine, special presentation. This is with Think Big Networks Fiber Optic Internet. Mark Wagner, Eric, do you want to introduce him?
Yeah, sure. So just a little background. Another town resident and myself. We're discussing and looking into bringing fiber optics to the town to increase competition in pricing for streaming services and and connectivity. And. It was recommended that we bring Think Big Networks in to discuss bringing fiber optics to Chesapeake Beach. And today we have a presentation, we have Craig Malong. Is that, is that, am I pronouncing that correctly? Okay, he is VP of Operations at Think Big. And he's in charge of the construction operations and best practices and would work closely with local partners such as Chesapeake Beach should we decide to move forward. And also we have Mark Wagner. He is the Vice President of New Markets and Commercial Services and was one of the two founding founders of Think Big. And he will also work with Chesapeake Beach moving forward as a, as a ongoing relationship if we decide to do that. And also of note is Think Big is working in Calvert County on other projects similar to the one that we'll be hearing about today, specifically further south in the county in Lusby. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mark.
So good evening, Council Mayor. So I'm honored to be here today to to talk about Think Big and thank you, Eric, for the introduction. So, yeah, we are a internet service provider. We are a fiber optic internet service provider. We're Maryland based. We're in several counties. Calvert County is one of them fairly recently for us. We started in twenty twenty four in Lusby, specifically Chesapeake Ranch. So had a similar meeting like this with their, down there it's an HOA. Five or six thousand person community, and we've already begun. We have a good relationship with Calvert County. We've have our agreements in place with the county to pull permits. And the next place that we would love to to build is right here in Chesapeake Beach. So Think Big, just real quickly, a little background, started with my partner, Deanna, real quickly, a little background, started with my partner Deanna in two, our first customers were in 2018. We started in Kent County, Maryland, specifically Chester Town, delightful little town. So we're very, you know, we, we have a lot of experience with working with towns that are waterfront, towns that have complex infrastructures, towns that have similar structures like this. And we pride ourselves on having been very successful so far and, and will work always, you know, hand in glove with this community and with this council to make sure that everything would go amazingly well here in Chesapeake Beach as well. So next slide, please. Next slide. So again, we are, we're fiber. Chesapeake Beach right now has cable. You guys have Comcast. All of, almost all of Calvert County is exclusively Comcast, which is very unusual in the state of Maryland right now. And it's, we're, we're, we're looking to change that as quickly as possible. There is DSL as well, fiber. The differentiators are, are many. It is, we have synchronous speeds, meaning that we have the same speeds up and down. Our community, our connection to the residences and the commercial structures here in Chesapeake Beach and elsewhere is all fiber. We don't have any, any other medium in our, in our plant. We, most, about 90 some percent of our plant is buried, which is an excellent way to install fiber optic cable because if you bury a glass coated in Kevlar and bury it, it's gonna, it's gonna be there forever. And so it's weatherproof and it is the best practice for installing fiber optics. And, and it's basically limitless. Once we get this connection to your house, it, the speeds that we can deliver are based on the endpoints, lasers. Right now, our, our service capacity is, we're selling up to 1,000 megabits by 1,000 megabits, but the capacity in the network is to go to 10 times that amount. And if in the future we need 100 times that amount, we'll just swap lasers. The fiber itself is limitless. So it is future proof. Next slide, please. Faster, more reliable, sustainable. It is faster. There is no faster medium to, to deliver bandwidth. Reliable, certainly we don't, it's a passive network in that the electricity is in your house and it's in our transmission gear, unlike cable, which is a large antenna. We don't have any electricity in between. So as long as the electricity is up at your house, maybe you have it connected to a battery backup. We're connected to battery backup and generator on our end. The, you know, we have weather like this today, you have power outage or whatever, our internet will be up. Sustainable, yeah, it's just way less electricity involved in the, in the process. Next slide, please. Most communities like Chesapeake Beach, and you know this, if you drive a little bit north, you're going to have a choice. And that's what we're all about, right? I mean, the, you, you know, at the end of the day, if we do this project together, you still have a Comcast and I can promise you, because I've seen it many times in the past, not only will you have Comcast, you'll have a much nicer Comcast because that's what competition does, right? So we'll have to earn every customer because right now everybody has something. So, but the best thing to have is a choice, right, and competition. So, next slide, please. So this is an important slide and I'll explain it. This is what, when we're looking for a market to go to, this is, this is part of what we look at and it's a big part of it. This is Calvert County and what you're looking right there is FCC data and that is what Comcast looks like. They have, they have told the FCC and all these addresses in purple, that's where they are. So you can see, you've got a little bit of another color and that is a little bit of FiOS, but very, very little. Everything else is, including here at Chesapeake Beach, is Comcast. On the right is Ookla. Ookla is the largest provider of, of speed data. You know, when you do a speed test, most of the time it's Ookla. We buy that data. And this is what an upstream snapshot of Ookla, including Chesapeake Beach, looks like. Those colors are, I think up to about 20 megabits. So that's a very slow speed. So this is, you can see a little bit north, you see the reds. That's what fiber looks like. That's, you know, greater than 100 megabit capacity, not over, take in the internet, but also to broadcast the internet. So these, these will be your Zooms. This would be your connection back to the world. That's, that, you know, with, red is synchronous. What you're looking down here is asynchronous. You might have 200, 250, even close to a gig one way, but definitely not the other way. Next slide, please.
Yeah, just to clarify. So in this particular slide, green is bad and red is good.
Yeah, maybe we should change that.
Okay.
Maybe red should be bad. But yeah, that, that's right, Eric. Next slide, please. And this is a, this is just a, a different representation of it and a little bit more data. So this is looking at upstream and downstream. So your downstream stuff here, you get 251, even up to a gig. And that's pulling and that's, that's, cable does that pretty well, right? And right, I assume those are Xfinity connections, that probably the highest that you can get. And that's what that looks like. But on the other, the flip side is, that's your ability to transmit, right? And you can see the difference. When we're done building Chesapeake Beach, the folks that have us, it'll be green, green. It'll be the same speed both ways. And the way that we like, you know, we sometimes talk about this and throw in a slide of, if you were going to buy a train ticket to New York from Baltimore to New York round trip and it was 100 miles an hour one way and 20 miles an hour the other, right? Would you pay the same amount of money? Because that's kind of what it is. It is very important and getting more important to have a synchronous experience with the internet as we interconnect our computers with the world in a different way, kind of beyond the internet into the AI experience. All of this is absolutely critical for the future. So, next slide, please. And I'm going to turn it over to Craig to talk about how if we work together, construction would work.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What we're showing is a, a three-phase, over 18 months build out plan that we're proposing. There's some, there's some flexibility, quite a bit of flexibility actually with the exact boundaries. But our intention is not to move too quickly. This is a construction project and we'll talk a little bit more about the, the phases of construction. But everybody always asks first, well, how long will this take? And our anticipation is that from when we come to an agreement, and most importantly, there are some permits that we would have to do with the Maryland Department of Highways, the SHA, once that's in place, the first customers would be able to receive service in about six months. And from there, we would spread out into 12 months and 18 months ultimately. That's the span of the project. Next slide, please. Let's talk a little bit about what does that process look like. As Mark mentioned, you know, it's a construction project. It's a, it's an infrastructure project. It involves boring and construction. But at the end of it, it doesn't work for us if we don't have customers from it. So everyone's yard that we'll be working in front of, even though we'll be in the right of way, they perceive it's their yard, right up to the road. They're going to be concerned. So that's one of the reasons we don't like to go too quickly. Because we want to come away with friends who want to subscribe when it's all said and done in the construction progress, process. So that starts with a lot of engagement in the community before the first spoon of dirt turns. Meeting with the people responsible for the right of ways, meeting with the people responsible for the water system, meeting with any community leaders that want to understand what's going to take place in their community. And we will door hang doors, let people know where we're working. All our trucks are clearly marked, our contractors are clearly marked. We put signage up and we have representatives of the company roving in the active construction areas, able to answer questions. And more importantly, if somebody has a concern, we're very proud of how quickly we turn around. It's construction and, and there are, there are going to be whoopses. There'll be things that get broken, but you can ask any of the communities we've worked in, we fix it. We'll, we will not shy away. We won't do a finger pointing exercise. We'll do the right thing because at the end, we want to have a customer from there. So the process involves a lot of communication upfront, a lot of community events, open homes, open house, getting people to understand what the process looks like because there is a little bit of pain for a short period of time while the construction takes place. If I can have the next slide, please. So what we will do is there will be an active cabinet in a discreet location in the community. Each cabinet serves about 5,000 homes. That simply is a point where extremely large pipes of internet get divided down into neighborhood distribution. So it's an active cabinet because it does have electronics in it. It has a power source. It has a battery in, in the base, there are batteries. There will be one of those in all of Chesapeake Beach, that just one. Everything else that we put in the community is flush with the ground. You, you have a lot of what's called a pedestal above ground. We place everything in flush vaults so that when you look down the streetscape, you don't see a bunch of plastic or metal boxes sticking up out of the ground. The technique that we do that with is we do directional boring in coordination with the other utilities to make sure we're not conflicts. It's not open trench, so there's not a big open trench and, and a line of dirt down the road. At points where there would be a service handhold, a box about one foot by two foot or three foot by four foot, depending on the size of the cable in the area, the directional boring machine would then enter the ground at that point and there'll be no disturbance for at least 100, 150 feet along. You can see an example of the signage we put at the community to make sure everybody knows who's on the street, who's, who's doing the work and the representatives from the company that are present in that area at the same time. You can see a reel, what we place in the ground is an inch and a quarter high-density polyethylene pipe. It, it's a roll pipe. There aren't couplers. It's very durable. It is a decent wall size. It meets the standards of the highway department. And we roll that out in the hole that's created by the directional bore rig. So that's, that's what encases the, the fiber optic cable, but it's an inch and a quarter in diameter. If I can have the next slide, please. So during the process, prior to the process, after the process, community events, as I mentioned, just partially to, to try to explain what we're doing, why we're doing it, to explain the products, what is different about fiber optic internet. We also offer phone from cable. You know, one is light, one's radio waves. It behaves differently. There's a huge difference in reliability and explaining how that, how that impacts people who want to work from home, people who are trying to have Zoom, you know, Zoom conferences or, or working on Teams, just explaining the details of how it works. We do that with a series of pop-up community events and whatever scheduled events that are typically held in the community that have spaces available, you know, we try to join, to be part of the community. If I could have the next slide, please. In the home, a pretty typical technology. So while it's fiber optic cable and it'll be fiber optic right up inside the home, at the point of the home entrance, we have a device called an ONT. It's an optical network termination. Wow. It goes from light to Ethernet and then Wi-Fi routers. The reason we use this technique is there are some customers that want to use their own router. There's some customers that have equipment that's provided by their employer. But this gives a lot of flexibility for how we'll serve a home, whether it's a really, really large home or a really, really small home. We can customize the installation to match what the customer needs. Along with the equipment we install, there's an app that allows them to, the customer to control and see what devices are on their network. There are restrictions they can put on their kids, time of day usage, parental controls. We have a whole suite of features that are available in a app that's called Command IQ that control the devices in the home and the way the service is presented. It's, it's very, very cutting edge and we have a lot of really cool features that, that range from real, real techies love it, down to people who just, just want to make sure the kids are doing their homework. You know, not, not surfing the internet. I want you doing your homework right now. If I could have the next slide, please. I thought we'd say thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, and we're here to answer any questions and I, and I, I want to make sure that the council understands. The other question that we often get is, what are we asking of the town? And, and in this case, it's simply the ability to, to access your right of way and what that agreement would, would look like. Typically, we work very closely with the, the town administrator, the town attorney. There's a right of way agreement. I already submitted a, a sample of that, which I assume that the, you know, every, every town has some comments as to that, but that's, that's where that agreement starts. So that's, that's, that's literally the only ask. The other ask is that you tell us how you would like us to work with you in terms of communication cadence, in terms of, you know, how often we're going to get together. In our experience, more is better because then if we're having very frequent, regular conversations, then we're going to be solving problems on a regular basis and making sure that the experience, the experience is as good as it can be. As Craig points out, it is construction. So there's, there, there are going to be issues and the best way to do that is together. And the best, best way to do that is for the folks that are impacted, not to come to you guys, but to come to us because we can solve, we can answer the questions and solve the problem. So we like to, we like to foster that type of relationship. And the other question we get is, you know, about Think Big. When we're, is this real? When is this going to start? How are you going to fund it? And so Think Big, as of January, my partner Deanna and I sold controlling interest in our company to a company called IQ Fiber. We're a wholly-owned subsidiary. We did that for a lot of reasons. In the past, meaning last year, for a project like this, we would go out for funding specific to the project. But by, through this relationship, our actual, actual owner is a, a company called SDC Capital, which is one of the largest digital infrastructure funds in the world. It's a $7 billion fund, basically. So as part of that transaction, we funded the next three years, including a project like this. And so all of the funding's in place. We have a plan in place. Craig has showed you a very, very brief bit of it, but this is something that we'd like to move forward with as quickly as, as comfortable for, for Chesapeake Beach. So, so we, you know, and I'll, I'll leave it at that. I'm here to answer any questions. Craig's here to answer any questions. If anything else comes up after this meeting, we're happy to come back. We're happy to answer any questions and work together in, in, in the way that you suggest.
If, if they, well, first of all, what do you need from the town to do this? Exactly?
Just the, an agreement to, to use town-controlled right of, you know, right of way.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's all on town.
So the ability to pull permits and to work with your Department of Public Works. Yeah.
And so the services that would be provided in addition to internet would be television and so forth? I mean, essentially the same kind of services that you have on the cable system, but, but higher speed and, and more reliability?
Yes, yes. And clarification, we don't, we are not, we don't provide any, I don't have any content deals. So I'm different with the cable companies in that I'm not going to come in and sell you a, a, a package that includes content. What we will be talking to folks about are three different packages of internet speed. Our lowest is $65 a month. And when I say that, that's all. We don't have any rental fees. We don't have any other hidden fees. We'd also don't have any contracts, but we will guarantee our pricing for two years. So 65 is our lowest, 75 is 500, and 85 is the full gig. That's it. And then we, we also have a phone product, which is around 25 bucks a month for voiceover IP, you know, all in, no, no, no additional cost. So that's what we do. We have conversations in, you know, with folks to help figure out streaming services. We are in a partnership with a company called My Bundle TV and that's basically a consortium of smaller ISPs like us have come together so that we can get really good content deals. And through our website and others, you can access Hulu or some of the others and you can see the price that we have been able to negotiate, which is kind of cool, right? Because it's kind of turning the whole thing on its head. Now the consumer controls, you know, pricing and, and by, by coming together and capturing the, the, the strength of the consumer, we're able to negotiate pricing. But it's a completely different model than, you know, cable where here you have A, B, or C, right? Choose one and get 100 and zillion channels, most of which you won't watch.
That's true.
You know, streaming services like us have no contracts, so you can make, you can change your mind every month. And, but we, we, we put together that, that relationship to help facilitate folks that are cutting the cord or as we call it, upgrading to streaming.
I could tell you, I don't, I don't have like cable, I cut cable a while back.
Yeah.
I, I pay around a hundred dollars for supposedly a gigabyte, but every time I play video games with my son, it, it lags.
Right.
So what you're saying with the FiOS, it, it, it doesn't.
Fiber. Yeah, fiber.
It, it doesn't have a bandwidth issue.
No, our, our, our lag is less than 20 milliseconds to like London. So it's, yeah. So you're lagging issues with, for gamers? Yeah, it's.
I'm saying, if, if five people are, like my son has his YouTube on and, and we're playing video games and my wife's working from home, the speed's going to be the same on all the devices.
It is. Yeah, I, I, I make the analogy to electricity, you know, and we're in a structure right now that has plenty of electricity to do beyond what we're asking of it today, right? But there might be an event where you need more or less. It's just, you know, you have it if you need it. You're not going to need it every day, but when you do, it's there, right? And then it's kind of like, you know, after, you know, a month into it, the internet is one less thing to worry about. You need it, you got it, right? And if we really, really need a lot of internet in the future, then. And if we really, really need a lot of internet in the future, then we're just going to be shipping you into a box. Right?
And you can use your own router.
You can.
You were saying?
Yeah, absolutely.
I do have my own and.
Oh, wow.
So, so that's simply, you know, I don't know. I, I, I won't say simply, that's not fair. But the ask is that we want to utilize the town controlled right of way. We want to do it in the best way possible. And in order to do that, we need an agreement. I've suggested one we used in the past. If, if the, if the town of Chesapeake Beach has one that you've more comfortable with, then we're, we're happy to negotiate there too.
I, I do have a few questions if you don't mind too. So one, I absolutely am for fiber optics. I love it. I would enjoy it very much at my own home. I had questions with regards to when you were referencing the laser. So I know you said, Dick, your current speed limitations are one gigabit. Is there a plan for either Think Big or IQ to invest into the, the additional ones? Is that?
Yeah, it's called XGS pond and that's what we will install. So your actually capacity of your home day one will be two point four gigs. We just haven't added that package yet. IQ Fiber has an up to five gig residential product, which I. It's less than that. Yeah. So that's coming.
Cause I, I did have, I, I wouldn't say that I get a ton of residents who grabbed me before meetings, but there's definitely some that who are tracking that this, this conversation was coming. And one of them in particular just said, please ask them to make the speeds faster and we're a go. That was their words, not mine. But the second question ties back to the deployment strategy. So the piping and stuff. We do have some flood challenges locally. How do you, is it just in case to where it'd be okay in that area or what's?
Flooding isn't an issue with us. We don't have any electronics that, I mean, you can, you know, there's plenty of fiber underwater, right? Lives underwater often. Our electronics won't. And so, yeah, no flooding's not an issue of being in a flood plain, being underwater. Right? I'm not speaking out of turn.
Okay. Then I would just say, Eric, thanks for bringing this here. I'm, I guess I'm a big supporter of competition. I'm a big supporter of fiber optics, a hundred percent. There's a Verizon building across the street from me. I used to ask, why isn't FiOS here? But, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm good with whoever's bringing in competition. I would just encourage maybe the, the higher speed as we go, because even myself, I don't, I have over one gig myself. So. Lot of, lot of kids playing at our house and doing a lot of high, high intensity.
Speed will not be an issue.
Yeah, thank you.
Promise that counsel.
A quick question from me. How many megabytes is in your sixty five dollar package?
Two fifty by two fifty. And then it doubles five hundred by five hundred is for ten dollars more. And then it doubles. A gig is ten dollars more. So.
Okay. And the optical network termination, is that free for consumers or do they pay a monthly?
No, no, there's no other fee.
No other fee. Thank you.
That's it. We're very, very proud of that. We try to be as simple as possible.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
What phase of construction, or I'm sorry, what phase of engagement do you develop your construction plans?
So it'd be very quick. Often that discussion is part of the right of way agreement discussion. And there's a couple of things that, that, that Craig will wait to, you know, it, it, it looks like we're going to get a right of way agreement done. Everything's working. Then he's going to green light a different level of design that we can then share with council. So we, we wouldn't expend that level of engineering and, you know, if, if we got a hard no, right, then that would have been a waste of money. So we, we sort of get to that edge and then based on this conversation and how this goes, then he'll green light some design and then he'll green light, you know, it, it, it'll just be a lot of green lights and then the construction process will be off. Starting with that level of design that you're referring to.
Okay. And then in areas that you demo, I guess, would be the construction term. You would put back in like form?
Yes, yes. That's a very good question. So we, as Craig pointed out, the directional drilling itself doesn't disturb a lot. It's the, it's going to be the junction boxes. And, and that, that, that's a whole, often we, we try to protect the sod that we took out and then patch it. And then we seed it or whatever. But if we're having issues with that, that's where it would be. And then, yes, we would, we would look to, to get that back to the condition that it was plus our vault, which is you can mow over it. You can drive over it. It can be a green lid if that's important.
Okay. So there's, there's no like infrastructure or paving or construction costs that the town bear.
No.
As part of the agreement.
No, if we break it, we'll fix it on our own.
Do you ever grant back so it could be fixed differently?
I don't, I don't, I, I would say this, that we've had many conversations and fixed things in, in ways that it's all, a lot of it is custom, you know, to, to what feels right to the town. I mean, it's going to, it's going to be a cost anyways, so I might as well fix it in the way that, you know, that, that works for the town. Yeah. Hopefully not break it in the first place.
Right.
Yeah.
Questions of curiosity. Thank you for answering them.
Of course.
I, I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You know, the main roads through here are state highways. Have you dealt with state highway for?
Every day, every day. We're pulling permits from SDAT every day.
Okay. So no, no issues with that?
No, sir.
Okay. And if we're talking about getting off the air, what we now consider off the air cable television or, you know, from Washington or Baltimore, those channels, do I hear you correctly that, that we will not have that available on this system?
No, but you, you can have that available through Hulu for YouTube, you know, live TV. There are, there are many options to get live TV over the internet.
I'll help him set that up.
You'll help him set that. So am I.
No, you're not.
We figure these things out. It's, it's become very, very simple as you can probably attest, right?
Yeah. My, my one last question is how do you guys differ from FiOS? Like, I know you probably get that question.
FiOS is, is their brand for kind of exactly what we're doing. I mean, they just branded a fiber optic network as FiOS. We are Think Big. It's, 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 you know, the same O N T is the same. It's the same. It's the same thing. Right? It's our version of it. So you guys are getting our version of that.
Similar calls.
Let me warn you, the attorney has a question for you.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Just to follow up right on that. So, so FiOS runs television basically over their, over their fiber. And so they're governed by the.
Partner is DirecTV. I think that's where they get their.
So, but they're governed by the Cable Act and you're not, correct? So FiOS, so Comcast isn't going to come to the town and say, oh, most favorite nation, we get the same deal.
No, we're not asking for a franchise agreement and we're not, no, no level of exclusivity, none of that.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And that is, yes, you are, you are correct that the determinant, the differentiator is that because we do not provide that level of content, just this, this connection, we are not.
Just wanted to make sure.
You had something?
Well, I know everybody would welcome the faster speeds, but I live in a very an area called the campground. It's very restricted space. So basically, when I've had before a tree taken down, we had to block the street for four hours and oh my God, you, you thought I just said the world was going to end. I, I learned very, very many new cuss words, but which I didn't think my neighbors were capable of. But I've seen, I've seen the FiOS and you said that there's no trenches because that certainly, if you, as I said, they, these are single lane roads that you can, I mean, if your truck is in the center there, nobody can get by. And so do you, how do you address that as far as this very limited space?
That's great.
Portion of town that she lives in is one of the original portions of the town that dates back over a hundred years, over a hundred and twenty.
So everybody would, they want faster, but if you're gonna, you know, they can't get by, they're going to have heartburn.
So here's what I can assure you. The roads in Chesapeake Ranch Estates, the HOA, the pavement is typically about twelve feet wide. And we have built over ten miles in that community and I would welcome you to call Maggie, the head of that HOA. There have been no complaints. Our machines are pretty small. We stay to the side. We haven't closed the road for more than fifteen minutes at a crossing. They're very narrow right of ways in Chesapeake Ranch Estates and we've been pretty successful with small machines.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
When you wrap up, I have some questions.
Good.
Okay. Well, go ahead.
And believe me, I'm all in favor. I live in town too and competition is good. But being the director of public works and all these underground utilities and dealing with Comcast for 20 years, I can think of a million questions that will go down that road. Real quick, first one is, do you use your own employees for the install or do you sub that out?
For the install?
Yes.
Yeah. So we do a combination. We definitely, and we, often it's our employee. We, we love our employee to have that, that interaction with the customer. It should be our employee. So a lot, you know, that we have done some contractors because we do a lot and sometimes it's a little ahead of us, but we, it is our intention to, I think since we're public works, it's a preferred term to the construction contractor perhaps.
The actual boring contractor.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm sorry. Yes, that we do contract that. But we, it's a contract we use for.
I understand. I'm, I'll, I'll just tell you upfront, I'm familiar with those boring contractors. No problem. Second one is fiber point to point. So you bring a fiber to each home? Into the home?
Yes.
So is there, so I'm just thinking of the splices, right? Are you able to splice it? If something's damaged, you go end to end for the replacement? Okay.
In this, this area. Out of the street, in the middle, there's a box that actually has connectors on it. Service drop, when the customer orders installation is when we run the service drop to the home. So we don't go on private property until somebody actually orders. Service drop will go to the home, but if they're planting a tree or they cut it, we typically splice it with a splice kit.
That, that's fine. And like I said, don't get me wrong. I'm all about it. But I just know what's coming. The second thing is, you know, when I drive through town, I visualize everything that's underground because I'm responsible for it. And I can think in my head, all the new Comcast mains that restricted right of ways and where she's talking about, you think a twelve foot road is small. This is an eight foot road with a fence on each side and houses. And you can deal with minimal logistics, but when it comes to the conflict with Comcast, is that something we have to fight? You guys work that out? Because I'm just thinking everyone here that is on a service already has Comcast, has a pedestal, has a box. So somehow you guys have to come in and finagle around that.
We do. Yeah. We, so we obviously we do the locates.
Yeah.
And, and we, I mean, we, most of the work that we do in communities like this is overbuilding Comcast customers. So we're very familiar with.
Okay.
That, yeah.
And like I said, I'm a proponent. I'll work with you guys and be part of those conversations. Those were just a couple of things I had upfront. Thanks.
I, I would look forward to working with you, sir. Thank you.
Yeah. Just real quick, I just wanted to piggyback a little bit on what John said. I gave up cable TV probably ten years ago or more. So, and I, I do know that some of the older folks might have a little apprehension about it, but we'll help you all through it. Just having some connectivity, some good speeds, fast speeds and going with streaming services has been the way, the way I've been doing it for 10 years and I'm never going back. And just to let you know, I, you can, well, this is, has nothing to do with, I'll, I'll talk to you later about it. About the ways to get your, your network channels for free.
Yeah.
Not in the public forum here.
Well, it's just, it's, it's not, there's nothing shady about it. It's just, it's not germane to the discussion here really. Other than to say, you know, there's a, there's definitely a number of solutions out there for you and and that won't be a problem. So I just wanted to thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. Thank you very, very much for the time.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you so much for your presentation. We appreciate it and we'll be in touch.
Go ahead. Okay. Okay. So I know we're jumping in next to new gen strategies. We have here Mike Maker and Nick Short, both of them coming from Annapolis. So we've talked to them previously. They had submitted a proposal. They're one of the two companies that we received a proposal from. This is a, a part of the phase one proposal where they would come and do a, a kind of like a one oh one, but we, we wanted it in a public forum so that it was available to everybody and not just to the council. And then I welcome the council here to ask all the questions, like any questions we have regarding like phase two and, and the out of scope or whatever your heart desires after this. And so Mike over you, sir.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Not quite as exciting as fiber optic, but very important nonetheless. So.
But some of it may be more exciting than fiber optic.
Water is very important, right? If you took, which service do you value more?
You, you, you can get by without fiber optic. You can't get by without.
My daughter might not agree, but yes. So yeah, yeah. Presentation stops if you have questions along the way, unless you want to wait till the end. That's, that's fine. I'm going to cover the first two topics and then my colleague Nick's can do the second two. I'm just going to talk about some challenges facing water and sewer utilities, kind of the, the state of the industry that we're in now. Just some high level principles of rate setting and kind of what the study will encompass and looking at your water and sewer rates. And then Nick will talk about rate design, looking at fix versus variable charges. And then just briefly touching on what your current rates are right now. And then how you compare right now with those current rates to some surrounding utilities. It's not always an apples to apples, right? Because every utility is different, populations, density, things like that, but you know, elected officials always like to see, how do we compare? And then that's kind of the initial phase and then we'll go into more of what we need to do for more of a deeper dive. So, next slide. So American Waterworks Association, A W W A, that's kind of the industry standard for, for the water industry. They put out the state of the water industry every year. They haven't put out their 2025 yet. But essentially what they do is they survey all the, all of their members, you know, in different utilities. And they ask, what are your top issues that you're facing? It's typically around some of the same ones you'll see in the top five or so. These are the top three for 2024. So watershed, source, water protection. I think we're finding, you know, water is that vital resource. We need to protect that. Are you seeing a lot of EPA regulations coming down, different compliance measurements, PFAS, things like that. So that's, that, that was number one in the survey. Number two, as you would imagine, is financing for capital improvements. Water and sewer industry is very capital intensive. We talked about, you know, buried infrastructure underground. A lot of water sewer mains are all going to be buried. You don't really notice there's an issue until one breaks and you have water gushing out of the, you know, out of the earth. So that's one of those unknown things that customers don't really know about, but that's, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars under the ground. It's very important that we protect and replace and repair those things. Some of them are, you know, fifty, sixty, a hundred years old. So certainly important where we're relining, replacing. There's different different organizations that help regulate. So obviously EPA, they have the Clean Water Act and Safe Drinking Water Act. Those were put in the seventies. And then obviously in the state of Maryland, we've got, you know, P U C. That's actually Virginia. So that should be Maryland Department of Health, but regulatory compliance with those. So as I mentioned, we're seeing PFAS, lead pipe. You're having to do an inventory for that. So there's important things there. Of course, those things are expensive. So that puts pressure on rates and affordability. And then lastly, the third one they talked about was renewal and replacement of aging water infrastructure. So as I mentioned, you know, we, we can, we can sit on, you know, projects, not do anything and just defer maintenance, but then something's going to happen where, you know, downtown Main Street, we're going to have a, a main break and it's going to shut everything down. We're going to have to do emergency repairs. So we want to, you know, make sure we're proactive in replacing those things. Standard and pours, they put out an outlook as well. They kind of cover the same thing. So regulations, expense pressures, rate affordability, weather, climate change is obviously very important. Labor, we're seeing a tsunami of retirements in the water and sewer industry as the aging workforce. So we're having to replace, you know, how do we find young folks to come and replace those folks to work in the workforce. So next slide. So I talked about how these things are very intensive and expensive and that's having an affordability issue. This slide here is just showing you roughly the past, you know, 20, 23 years. The median household income in green since 2000 through 2023. That has increased about two and a half percent per year. So that's essentially, you know, our household income, how much funds we have available to pay for increasing costs. CPI in red, that's, you know, the basket of goods, things were, CPI is very, you're seeing a lot of that news in the past few years. That has roughly kept up with the median household incomes, about two and a half percent. However, there's a portion of the CPI of that basket of goods. That's the water and sewer portion, the water and sewer costs. And that you can see is roughly doubled annually, increased year over year as what typical CPI has. So you're not alone in seeing increases in these costs. This is a nationwide issue. And so it's certainly important that you're addressing it. Next slide. So basic principles of water and sewer rate setting. So ideally they should be self sufficient. These are enterprise funds. They should be technically run as a business. They should, their user rates and charges should cover the expenses. That's not to say, can't be subsized by the general fund, but eventually you'd like to get a point. That's not to say, um, can't be subsidized by the general fund, but eventually you'd like to get a point where the, you know, the fund is an enterprise fund and, and self-generating its revenues. Um, you can certainly provide payments back to the general fund for support services, HR, IT, things like that, that they're not, that the fund doesn't have itself, but ideally you get to a point where, um, it's receiving the support services and paying its own way. Um, typically the costs are paid through, you know, user charges. There's a, you know, rational nexus between what you receive and, and how you pay for it. Uh, usage or demand is usually the, the most common way, per thousand gallons, per hundred cubic feet. Um, there's usually a fixed cost component and a variable cost component. Ideally, we want to keep rates and fees low over time. And I emphasize over time because again, we can defer maintenance, not do any infrastructure investment, and then we have something blow up. So ideally, we want to look at a, a plan, you know, uh, we're going to give you a financial model. It'll have 10 years of projections in there. Ideally, we'll recommend a five-year plan, so we're not going to increase it and then drop it and increase it. It's going to be kind of a smoothing out a gradualism of increases. Um, it'll include some recommendations on funding of reserves, like you have in, you know, a checking account, a savings account yourself. And we want to have smooth gradual increases. But in the end, you know, someone must pay. So whether it is still subsidized by a general fund and it's coming out of property taxes, or if it's called coming from user rates, or as I'll get into, if you have new customers and we have like a policy of growth pace for growth, new customers who connect to the system pay their fair share, which you already have a capital contribution charge. We'll take a look at that as well. And then once you join the system, you start paying, you know, your regular quarterly bill. So if you were to give any discounts to one group, you still need to collect the same amount of total revenue. So then that means someone else must pay poor or some class must pay more. Next slide. So this is actually, uh, the table of contents in our financial model. So you'll get an Excel model, it'll be the property of the town. We'll, we'll show you how to work with it. We'll first initially load everything in and kind of work with you. But then eventually we want this to be a, you know, a living document that you can work with, an Excel model. Um, but it's, it's twofold. So every box in here is a schedule in the model, so you can click on it, it'll bring you to the schedule, you can come back to table contents. But it also goes kind of a flow of the study. So we have assumptions in green here, kind of schedule one, that's going to be things like inflation. So are we doing a cost of living adjustment? What are we seeing for chemical increases, you know, electricity, things like that? That'll then flow into the operating expenses. So that's your, you know, day-to-day salaries, benefits, materials. Uh, what does that look like? We'll put in some history. So we actually already have some data that, uh, Similia has given us. So we can put in some history of actual expenses. Put in your, you have almost a full year of 25, we have still three more months of 25. Uh, we'll work with you in informing your 26 budget, put that in and project those forward. Uh, current debt, so that's any principal interest payments you're paying now for the water sewer system. And we'll actually have that go out, uh, past 10 years. So if your debt goes out another 20, 30 years, we'll have that go all the way. Uh, capital improvement plans, again, this is one of these are the largest drivers. So we'll look at how are you going to fund these things? So if you're going to cash fund, that means you need the money that year. If you're going to debt fund, we'll calculate the debt payments. So say it's going to be 3% at 30 years. Um, these are again, a long-lived asset, so it makes sense to spread those costs out over future customers, right? We don't want to put it all on the backs of today's customers because 10 years down the road, we're still going to have that infrastructure. So it may make sense to, you know, do some long-term debt planning. But again, we'll look at all that with, uh, with staff over, over meetings and see what makes sense. And then I mentioned, um, reserves. So we typically recommend both an operating reserve and a capital reserve. Operating reserve is going to usually be tied to your operating expenses. So at a minimum, we'd say you want to have like 25% or 90 days, you talk about it in days, so 90 days a year is 25%. Keep 25% of what your operating expenses are in a operating reserve. And so that's it. At some, you know, large utilities, they might have 180 days, 270 days, maybe a full year of cash. Um, if you go to the bond market, you know, rating agencies, they want to see the more cash, the better. So you're going to get a higher rating. You'll get lower debt interest, things like that. Uh, so that, that blue area, that's kind of the cost of the system, what we call the revenue requirement. We left out anything that's a miscellaneous revenue. So anything that's not user rates or charges. So if you have penalties or interest or miscellaneous fees, that just lowers how much you need to collect from customers. Uh, the connection fees are what the industry calls system development charges, or we call capital contribution fees. We'll obviously, uh, take a look at those. Anything you can get from those is less you need to get from user rates. So again, that's growth pays for growth. New customers pay for their costs, existing customers pay for theirs. Uh, so then after that, we'll take a snapshot of what your rates are, your customers, your usage, we'll project those, make sure we're calculating rates correctly. And then at the end of the day, it's really, your rate is, you know, your cost divided by your usage or your cost divided by units. But it's obviously more advanced in that you can get into, well, how much we want to collect from fixed charges, how much we'll collect from, you know, variable charges. Uh, and Nick will get into some of that as well. Uh, so at the end of the day, we'd say customers don't care what their rates are, they care what their bill is going to be. So in green, we'll then look at some sample bills. So if we, um, for this initial phase, I know we only have a couple more months left until you have to have your FY '26. We'll help you inform, you know, what you overall you might need. Uh, I don't recommend we get into changing structure at that point because you don't know if your billing system could handle those changes or things like that. But you could do something maybe midway through '26 or maybe beginning of '27. But for '26, we'll have idea of what does the system cost, just to have an idea, true value, true cost. And then it's really going to be a policy decision, you know, for the elected officials of what you want to do with that information. And then we just have an operating performance. We then say, okay, this is the new revenue we need, less out the cost. Do we have a surplus we can then put into the reserves or do we have shortfalls still in? And if we have shortfalls, do we have cash then to, you know, hold off those shortfalls? Uh, next slide. So again, this is just the stack of the revenue requirements. So the base cost being O and M expenses, the debt service, capital projects, uh, any new debt service, and then the reserves. We add all that up, that's the cost we need. Uh, next slide. So I talked about what the industry calls system development charges, SDCs. Um, I know here they're referred to as capital connection charges and, you know, many states call them different things and Virginia called availability fees. Um, but ideally what this is to offset the capital cost of that backbone capacity. So when, you know, somebody joins the system as a new customer, not, not an existing house and they change, you know, owners, this is when a new, new customer connects to the system. This is to buy into that system and really to buy into the investment that all the previous customers have already been paying for. So what's the difference between these and user rates? So user rates, you can collect both operating and capital, system development charges or capital contribution. It's only capital. So the kind of, the no-no is you can't really use these fees to, to pay for operating. So it can only be for capital. Debt service as well, essentially a form of capital. Um, the basis, user rates are calculated based on what you need that year annually. Whereas system development charges are based on the cost of the capacity. So there's really this, I'm getting the weeds, but there's three ways of calculating. There's like a buy-in where, okay, well, um, the original cost, what is, we'll ask for all your fixed assets, we'll look at all the information. And then we'll say, okay, we're going to buy into the system. What does that cost? That's usually going to be the lowest calculated fee. Incremental is looking at your future, your forward-looking capital improvement plan. Which projects are increasing capacity or expanding the system? That's usually going to be the most expensive calculation. And then there's like a weighted average, a hybrid of those. Um, so again, customers that are charged, the SDCs or capital connections only charge to new customers. And then once it become an existing customer, then they start paying their, you know, their quarterly bill. Uh, user rates are obviously recurring and the SDCs are one-time. And ideally, well, not ideally, there must be a rational nexus is the kind of the term in the industry, which is just a reasonable relationship between what you're getting for that, that charge and then, you know, what you're paying for. Uh, next slide. So this is just a graphical that, that shows you the relationship between those two. So again, like I mentioned, operating expenses, those have to really be paid through user rates. There's really no other way to collect those. Capital expenses, they can either be for system maintenance, non-growth-related, or they can be for expansion, growth-related. And those can either be cash or debt-funded, but ideally the, the maintenance-related ones come from user rates. And then the, uh, expansion-related ones come from capital contribution charges. But there's an important note here. Uh, the capital contribution charges are not calculated what they should adequately be set at. Or, you know, you anticipate all this growth is going to come, we're going to have 200 connections a year and we only get 10 connections. And you're going to have, you know, if your growth expenses exceed your revenues, you're going to then have to collect that funds from user rates. There's really nowhere else to get it. Uh, next slide. All right, I'm going to let Nick cover this.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mayor, Council. So, uh, we're going to switch gears a little bit now and, and talk about the actual rate design. We spoke about some of the principles of the rate-setting process as well as the current state of the water industry itself. Uh, but now we're going to talk a little bit about, about the actual rate design and building out a rate design. So the actual rate design itself is largely influenced by the policy objectives of the actual utility. So every utility is different. They have different drivers that are driving, uh, the expenses of the system forward. And so because of that, it's a bit of a balancing act. Every, every rate design is a bit different. Um, and so in this graphic, you can see, uh, the very top ones, we have revenue stability. So bringing in more fixed revenue, that means we know how much revenue we're actually bringing in year-to-year, which is good. However, the affordability potentially of your customers can, can take a bit of a hit if you're bringing in more fixed charges as if they don't spend a lot of water and they're maybe on lower income, or if they're maybe more elderly, they can have tougher issues trying to recoup some of the, uh, not recoup some of the costs, but see some of those savings from more on the variable sides. Um, additionally, you have existing service area or your current customers that you have, customers that aren't really, we're not growing out the system anymore. Those are kind of the already established customers versus potentially, uh, economic development. If you have a, a new neighborhood coming in and you are adding in multiple, multiple houses and, 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 uh, accounts every single year, then you could potentially look at becoming more of a, a growth-focused, uh, rate design and potentially lowering and encouraging some of those new customers, uh, to come in. And then encouraging use. We, we do want to encourage use in the sense of, that's where we're getting the majority of the revenue from. But we also want to discourage any overuse, any, any useless, uh, spending of water. Um, and you can also achieve that through the rate design process. So you can send, uh, pricing signals. And we'll get into a few different actual rate designs themselves. You can send pricing signals to the different tiers that you have. And so depending on how much they change from tier to tier, that can, as again, send a pricing signal to your consumer saying, this is a jump, this is a jump now, and the next tier can be a jump. So it's just trying to kind of keep an idea of where you want to be. Uh, and then detail and equity, how complicated do you want to make your rate designs versus just the ease of understanding and implementation? You can have a unit rate across the board, but you might not be capturing the correct revenue from the different groups that you have. So it can all be different. Next slide, please. So I just mentioned a little bit about the fix versus variable costs. Um, some examples or some, some, I guess, elements of a fixed cost, they don't really vary with water sales. So you have about 80% or typically the majority of the costs come from fixed costs. Um, salaries, debt, labor, services, supplies, all of that. Well, not electricity and chemicals. Those are actual variable costs and they will vary with the water sales. So how much water is actually being used? Um, and typically it's usually around 15 to 20% of the actual cost of the utility. Um, what we've seen recently is long-term water usage has been on a decline and this for a variety of different reasons. Stronger conservation policies being pushed forward, um, installation of low, low fixtures, fixtures that are just more efficient, they don't require as much water. Um, and just overall decline in an average household size. So because of that, what we're kind of seeing more in the industry is more of, uh, a shift to trying to collect more revenue through fixed charges or fixed revenue. Next slide, please. And so for the fixed rate side of a rate design, you can have certain types of actual fixed charges, common charges. Um, the one that's probably just most popular among utilities is a billing or customer charge. You might also hear called service charges. Um, and really the cost basis is just recouping for the actual cost of metering, billing, collecting, sending out, uh, sending out the actual bill to, uh, the consumer and to the customer. And typically this charge doesn't really vary by anything. It's, it's more of like a flat amount. Um, versus a, a meter charge, which will vary with the actual meter size. So if you have a five-eighth inch customer, they'll vary in pricing and what it'll actually cost for them versus a, a four-inch or, or an eight or 10-inch customer. Um, and then we also have what's called a minimum charge. So the, really the minimum charge, uh, it's a billing charge and or a service charge. But it can and usually does actually include a small or usually your first tier minimum allowance is, is wrapped up in the actual cost of that. So just as an example, um, this has nothing to do with your actual rate design, but you could have a $10, uh, minimum charge that allows 5,000 of, of usage in the first year. And any tier after that would just have a variable of charges associated with that as well. Um, so again, I mentioned this before, but the advantages and disadvantages, it's a balancing act. So every system is different. The higher the fixed charge, that's great. We're, we know, we have a better idea of how much revenue we're bringing in. But again, the higher the fixed charge, the more expensive the services for customers that really aren't spending or you're utilizing a lot of water. Next slide, please. And so a few different rate designs. I believe originally, a few years ago, you guys were operating under a, a uniform rate design or a unit rate design, which is really just one flat rate to kind of capture the majority of, of the variable charges. Um, and then you can also have an inclining block on the top right. So an inclining block is what you've switched to now, where for every, every step up in the tier, we're going to make that tier just a little bit more expensive and more expensive. And typically you'll see something like that when we're trying to shift more to a conservation approach. Um, versus a declining block, which typically utilities have, have moved away from recently. But that would be more for a, a town or utility that would be trying to bring in large industrial customers, customers that would be sending a lot of, of water. They're trying to incentivize those customers to come in. They have typically a, a large, uh, just amount of water they already currently are sitting on. And so for them, it's, it's not a, a, as important of a commodity as some other places. And then seasonal and peak usage, we can get into this as well. So the seasonal peak usage is probably more, more of a complicated one, but realistically, all it is, is, is the summer peak usage is just based off of the percentage of the winter usage for that customer. So whatever they use in the winter can then be applied in the summer to more of like a, a peak usage time where you have more people coming in. Um, vacationing and tourism, things like that. So you can capture some more of that in that regard. Next slide, please. So some factors that are affecting Chesapeake Peak themselves and their rates and charges. So O and M are operating in maintenance expense changes, salary, uh, the rise in prices for electricity, chemicals recently we've seen. Um, and so all that's driving up our escalation factors. Uh, your CIP, so how much you're actually trying to invest in your system itself, how much is actually required to be invested in your system, uh, annually? Uh, your current debt service or any CIP projects that you plan on just simply debt funding as opposed to cash funding. That would be involving your debt service. Um, your customer changes. So any growth in waters or customers, if you're adding, if you're adding in more customers or you're seeing a decline in, in, uh, usage, or if you're seeing a good decline in actual growth, um, those can be some factors that actually affect that. Similarly with water usage. Um, any miscellaneous revenues. And then finally our reserve targets. How aggressive? Um, how established are your reserves? Are you trying to add a new one? Are you just trying to get one simply off the ground? Every place is different. So those are some of the factors that are currently affecting them. Next slide, please. All right. So these are your current rates and charges and this is effective, uh, July 1, 2024. So the actual fixed fee, the fixed charge that you utilize is just based on a per ECU, per household basis. Um, the quarterly usage or variable rates are on a per thousand gallon basis. Uh, you have four tiers, one to four, four to eight, eight to 15, and then 15,000 is collecting anything over 15,000, obviously. The sewer use without water service is just, is, I assume if you're a sewer customer only. Um, and then you also have the capital contribution charge that Mike mentioned before. So $10,000 for water and $20,000 for sewer. And finally, so this is a, this is a quarterly local comparison from a few other regional utilities in this area. So up top you have Trap, you have a few other counties, you have Kent County, you have Howard County, Charles County, and then Anarono County down below, and then St. Mary's County as well. Um, but anything in blue is your current water charges, anything in green is sewer. Typically we see sewers just more expensive, apologies. Um, and so just those together, they show about $262 for a quarterly bill for a 9,000 gallon, uh, user. Typically we'll see roughly around 3,000 gallons a month is a, is a typical trend that we've seen. Next slide, please. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bo. Council, you've got any questions?
People do. Here, I, I did have one quick question before, if I could just ask, uh, because we, we talked about this, well, two things. One, um, as part of this, if you have a recommendation on the system that we use, we use Tyler Technologies. I don't know if they're good or bad, but, um, you know, if, if there is a, a system recommendation, because maybe we need to upgrade our infrastructure or, or billing system, that'd be great. But the question I really had when it comes to, uh, capacity versus system strain. Um, you know, like we talk about these tier rates, you know, if a system can manage, you know, a million gallons a quarter or whatever number we, we want to put in there, uh, is higher usage, does that, does that impact the billing or how you guys approached billing in the past when it comes to strain? Or is that kind of a non-factor because it's just based off capacity?
Well, I mean, if you're using the inclining block and they're sending those pricing signals that the more used, the more expensive it is, that should help you with your, if you have capacity issues, you're meeting your treatment design capacity. And that would help. Or it's alternatively a declining, it'd say, hey, water's a discount. water is a discount the more you use, that's that's not going to help your your capacity issues.
If you don't have capacity issues, it's more like, is there a, I guess, is there a throughput strain that you see typically based off of usage?
Well, I mean, individual customers have different meter sizes. That certainly would allow how much you can flow can flow. Like American Water Works Association, I mentioned before, there's a manual M one, and they have different meter sizes and how many gallons per minute can flow through that meter. So like a five eight inch can pull so many gallons per minute, whereas a two inch can pull like twenty times what a five eight inches. So that's why sometimes you'll see a fixed charge that varies by meter size because you're saying, hey, if you both are on your your taps, they're going to drain our system a lot faster, their meter is more expensive to maintain. So a lot of times we'll recommend having a higher charge for a larger meter size. But typically, your residential, your customers, probably ninety percent of your customer base is like a five eight inch, like the base. So if you did implement something like that, you'd have those larger customers paying their fair share, and you wouldn't really be affecting the smaller customers. In fact, you'd be holding down what increases theirs might have been if you didn't vary it that way.
Okay, thank you. I know Lori wants, I I see the smile, go ahead.
It sounds like a lot of the decisions we make, you're you're kind of, we're going to have questions for you, and you're going to basically guide us. And basically, we're going to end up making the decisions on the rates.
Yeah, so we'll obviously have status meetings with staff, and if anybody wants to have one on ones with counselor or something, we can do that too. But ideally, we'll come back to you with a few recommendations. We don't want to give you ten because that's, you know, analysis paralysis. But it would be a recommendation that both staff and consultant kind of think makes sense, and maybe three alternatives or something. And then we'll show you, like I mentioned before, that no one cares what their rates are, they wonder what their bill is going to be. So the impact, if you change the design, if we kept your current rate design, everybody's bill goes up the same or stays the same. Once we start changing design and saying, okay, we tweaked the fixed charge, then it's important to look, what is a small residential customer? How are they affected? How's a median residential? How's a large median? How's a commercial? Maybe what are the top fifty customers? How does it affect them? Like the really large commercial? And that's going to be the important part to see how it affects them. So, yeah.
So I I think I heard you say that as long as we work with the current rate design, you could have recommendations for our rates for our fiscal year twenty twenty six?
Right. So, yeah, we're doing that right now. We just got some, just got the data. So we can kind of do a high level assessment and give you an idea of probably build up most of the revenue requirement, like what are the costs? We'll give you an idea of, does that match what you thought the costs were? And then we'll say, you know, your current revenues, how do those compare to the costs? Maybe your revenues are covering expenses, or we still think you might need a little bit of an increase, but then you, it's up to you to decide. All right, they think we need another five percent additional revenue for the twenty six budget. Or can we move some projects around, or could we actually use some debt services out of cash? Or hey, this budget line item, does it need to be this amount? Or hey, we do truly want to subsidize the general fund, or we have cash sitting aside that we can help keep those rates down. But yeah, there's there's some levers we can pull. But again, we can't get into the detail. I wouldn't even recommend changing your rate design in the next three months because if you don't do a proof of your revenues and you send out bills and you're like, oh, it didn't match up, Tyler Technologies didn't match. That's a good company. They they're they're a large company, Tyler Technologies. I'm not worried that they could, anything we recommend, they can handle, I'm pretty sure. It's just you do want to make sure that you put it incorrectly, you've entered all the information in, do a proof to make sure it still brings in the same amount of revenue.
So something I noticed about our design is we do have a tier structure, but it's very squishy.
Yeah, we noticed that too. I like those rates, it's like a seven cents to step two, and it's like eight cents. It's not sending any pricing to, it doesn't matter if you use tier four or tier one, because it's pretty much the same rate. You probably want to put a little more of a, I won't say a penalty, but a little more, if you're going to use excessive use and you're just going to, you know, let your hose run when it's raining out, then you should have to pay for something for that, you know? And by doing that, we still make sure it brings in the same amount of total revenue, all the different alternatives. But then you can see, okay, if you want to stay in tier four, you're going to pay for that usage. You know, you'll, and it'll help by increasing that higher, the tier four, it'll lower the tier one. So somebody who's a small user will see a benefit from that.
Right. So is that's a tweak that our system can handle for fiscal year twenty twenty six?
Not July first, probably, but we could maybe do a half year, like you could do something in December or something like that. We, that requires looking at all your your usage by customer. So we asked, that's like the the trickiest thing to to request from you is detailed usage by every customer for the past year or two, so we can kind of see where those tiers should be.
You could, you could know that by July first by looking at?
Yeah, I mean, you could just go ahead and make those tiers different, but we're not going to know, you know, how many customers fall into those tiers until having the detailed usage.
Right. Yeah, because there really is a problem where certain users are booing other users in our right.
I mean, you almost have a unit rate right now because they're so close together. It's not really even a tiered rate, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, okay, well, you know. So what you can as fast as you can, we, the the faster we get an understandable rate structure in place, I think I think we'd all like to put this issue to bed in a way that everybody understands and feels is fair. So we can work faster. We would all appreciate it.
You only work as fast as the data coming in, but yes, well, we're correct.
All right.
Yeah, speaking to that, we have some public comment about fixed fees and and EDUs. Is that something we can bring to you and maybe get some recommendations on? And our water and sewer manual is like forty years old, and it doesn't have anything about fixed fees in there.
Yeah, I haven't looked at the manual yet, so we're about to have some discussion with staff to see what they want us to do with the manual, but we can certainly provide recommendations on policies and procedures.
We have, yes, thank you.
Eric?
Hi, thanks for coming. I have a few questions for you. Uh, you're in your mic, right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Thanks for coming. Can you lay out a little bit more? Flesh it out a little about how, what what the interface between you and the town leaders slash the council would really look like?
Like interaction?
Mm hmm. Like, yeah, exactly, like bring data to us, us being able to bounce things off of you. How does that exchange look?
Yeah, I imagine we'll have more frequent discussions with actual staff, but we would, you know, we're we're only in Annapolis, it's not too much for us to come down here. If you want to have, I would suggest the first step is we do the, look at the total costs, we call the revenue requirements. And if you want, we can come down and present those to you and kind of say, okay, here's what it costs for operating expenses the next ten years. Here's what it looks like for debt service. When that runs out, here's what your CIP looks like. And after discussing public works director and consulting engineer and say this with the project for the plan. And then try to say, this is what the total cost is, this is how much you're bringing in revenue. It's either covering or it's not. What do we want to do? Here's some options, what we can do.
I just want to, I just want to clarify. So you would prefer to have the communication stream be narrow between you and the and say the town administrator versus everybody coming at you.
Yeah, I I probably would. It's it's nice to have one point of contact. So I will be the point of contact from the firm, Nick will work on the model, and I have another analyst, but.
So it'd be best for us to bring our information and funnel it, funnel it through here. Is this, is that, is that correct?
This works, right?
Okay, that's I have other questions. Hold on just a second. Thank you. So on this one slide here, where it's talking about, I guess it would be slide number nine, where it's talking about the relationship between user fees and capital contribution charges and so forth. Just a a quick question I had while we were, while you were going through this. What is the effect of limited growth or no expansion? Because this town's pretty well built out. And there's a little bit, there's a few pockets here and there, but you know, our model's definitely not going to be able to be based on an expansion model.
And yeah, we're not anticipating growth to help keep rates down or anything like that. Most of places we work in Maryland, Virginia are fairly built out. I mean, maybe if you go in the south or out west, there's a lot more growth, and you're seeing a lot more revenue coming from those one time costs. We don't want to be unrealistic and you say, all right, we're going to get five percent in growth, and then we don't need to raise rates. We want to be realistic. So ideally, we work with a town, what do you have in your comp plan? What is the what is the public works director think? She said, oh, this pocket of town, we're adding two hundred homes here. Or maybe it's, you know, we just want to be conservative and say, we're built out, we're going to have no growth in customers. And we split customers from usage because we actually may be adding, you know, a handful of customers each year. But as Nick showed, we're, they're using less water per capita, so we might even show a little bit of growth in customers and flat usage, or some places we have decline in usage. So actually showing it's a half, it's a negative half percent of growth every year. So then you actually need, you need to bring in more revenue. Yeah, we're not, it has the ability, if you if you do have growth, but we're not going to force growth into the model.
Oh, yeah. Just to boil that down a little bit, so we're we're saying, you're saying that limited growth or no growth is going to have like, you know, an upward pressure on rates.
Yeah, I mean, that's just how it works. Yeah, you have less customers to spread over the cost.
I just wanted to make sure.
Unfortunately, that's not, yeah.
Okay. Sometimes it's good to just say things out loud.
It's like one of the older industries, right, where the demand goes down and the cost goes up.
Yeah, okay. And I just wanted to to make a couple of comments that I think most of my colleagues share, but I think, you know, we're not really seeking for justification for high rates. What we're seeking is designs that will help us keep the rates low without subsidizing the the fund. And so, and you know, if we could keep in mind towards suggestions on on how to do that versus justifications on raising rates.
Yeah, as I noticed from the executive decision, right, we're, you're already, you're lowering them twenty percent. So we'll be starting with that basis going forward of how much revenue that brings in, and that'll be our starting point. Like I said before, you could say we don't want to raise any more revenue, but we could make some tweaks within the rate design, still bring the same amount of revenue, but it would shift which customers, the increases are coming.
Right. So that's, you know, to 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 Lori's point a little bit earlier. You know, we're, with the tier system, we're always going to have winners and losers. If we if we're engaged in the tier system, there's going to be people that are carrying a bigger burden. I'm not particularly for the tiered system, but just wanted to say that out loud. And then also, you you made some comments about a trend, I guess you didn't make those comments, Nick did, about a trend that was a trend in the industry where they're beefing up the the fixed costs. And
And you already have a high fixed cost.
Again, I don't really think that's a direction that we want to go at all.
I think, well, there's a lot of utilities that aren't where you are, and they that was all variable usage, so they had no consistency in revenue they were receiving. So they were just trying to get to some percentage of revenue. I haven't seen exactly what percentage of revenue yours is fixed. I'm sure it's it's a lot higher than some other places.
Yeah.
So you're, I'm not, I don't think we'd suggest making the fixed portion any higher.
Yeah, I think we would be looking to lower that. And and again, what was the reasoning for the heavy fixed rates?
So, yeah, so if, yeah, I mean, most of your costs are fixed, right? You still have salaries unless you're hiring seasonal employees in the summer when you have more usage. Other than electricity and chemicals, pretty much everything is fixed. Debt service got to be paid off whether you bring in any more revenue or not. So but we can't go ahead and then just make all the rates eighty percent fixed because then it would hurt small users.
So I agree that the 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 costs are fixed, but the the usage isn't fixed for the the people who are using.
But we're seeing declining usage, right? So we're actually having, the costs are going up by inflation. We're getting less usage, so then that that, you know, that simple form of cost divided by units is getting higher. And so if it was all usage based, you're going to get less revenue than you had the previous year to pay for higher costs. So that's why I think utilities are trying to shift to more of a a fixed base, not a hundred percent fixed, because I don't think that's, but just so, there's a, it's a balancing act, right? So that may be an alternative we can bring you and.
Yeah, I'm just, I just, but of course, there's fixed costs, but the fixed costs don't have to be covered by fixed fees.
You want to come back to the mic because this is being recorded?
I got you. So your your fixed charges in in are. I'm sorry. I I came up here with a great plan, but I but um for the for the actual fixed charges themselves and the fixed costs, like Mike mentioned before, as we're seeing the the rise in the fixed charges, that's great for the utilities, but I think majority, the the, for you guys as as it is, they're very effective as they are in terms of bringing in the required revenue that you're trying to do. It just appears that way in the fixed charges. We'll obviously dive into it more when we're performing our our usage analysis of the actual model. But I just wanted to say that I I agree with you. I think that the fixed charges are healthy.
You're a seasonal community as well, right? So you have some customers aren't here year round. So they're not paying any of those variable charges when they're not here, so that you feel that impact. Ocean City, which is seasonal, you know, hundred times this, they have, I think they go from like a couple thousand to four hundred thousand people in the summer. They their sewer is all fixed. I think it's all based by per fixture. Because then they have those seasonal customers help, you know, sharing the cost of all year round customers.
Yeah. So our our fixed fees just recently went up a fifty percent increase. And that's, the community is not pleased with that at all. And so we're not looking to keep, I don't think, I I'm I'm speaking for, I guess I'll just speak for myself. I'm not looking to have them even remain where they are. I would be looking for a plan that's that where they're decreasing.
Yeah, I think the history I saw was it was a fifty dollar water and sewer combined. Then it went to fifty each, and then it went to a hundred for sewer. So that's a, increase wise, that's a huge increase.
Yeah.
Yeah. And if you're a small user and you're saying, I only use three thousand, five thousand.
I I like this idea of the the minimum charge. I think Lori Lori brought that up a while ago. I think I like I like that idea. Okay, I only have one one or two more questions here. Okay, so when you come, when you, when you decide, I guess, through our input filtered through Samelia, and that communication's going on, you get all of your data and you decide you're going to put together a few models. I would, I would suggest maybe a few models that are drastically different.
Okay.
So that we not, again, just like we have these rates that are all packed together, all the, all the same. You know, maybe we could, we could have, instead of like vanilla and light vanilla, we could have a whole bunch of different, drastically different things that we can consider.
Yeah. And this is helpful because, again, a lot of this, it's a science and an art, there's a policy objective. So you giving us policy recommendations is going to inform, we don't just go back and, what do we think makes sense? You guys tell us what.
Yeah. And so then, again, and I think someone else asked this already, but just to put a little bit more specificity to the answer here, what? So when do you think that you'll be able to get us models? And when you get mo, when you, when you, when you decide, not just scenarios, or not just like, like this page here where it's just based off of ninety thousand gallons, but could you actually give us like an Excel model where we can run our own scenarios through the through those models?
Yeah. So as I mentioned before, you know, this is going to be your property, right? We don't charge any licensing fees. Some clients, they may want us to come back and update in the future year, and no, we like to try it ourselves, and maybe you just Q A, Q C it, did it make sense? We break it. If you break it, I can give you another version, it's, I'll keep versioning. But I will train, probably, I'd like to train two or three people, so that way if somebody leaves, you know, maybe somebody in engineering, somebody in finance, right? Because they're going to use it for different purposes. Engineering may look at the capital plan, financing may look at the operating. But each year, you can make the model, you know, more accurate by replacing your budget with actuals and see how did that hold up? And then the timing, the schedules, the blue I showed, the blue schedule of revenue requirements, two, three weeks, we probably have that. So that would give you an idea to inform your your budget. It won't change the structure, right? Because that's going to be a little more detailed. That summer, probably, for if you wanted.
So I think, I think you're talking, when you're talking about models, you're talking about models that show the the entire system and how it would work as far as revenue collection for the fund, right? What about models where we can run specific usage bills through to, so we can calculate exactly what a particular person's bill would be?
That's why I bring up the importance of the sample bills, right? Because especially if we're going to make drastic changes, higher or lower, once we see how that affects its dynamic, so we could, we'll be able to change. But what if the high tier is not fifteen thousand, it's twenty thousand, it'll dynamically change what the rates is, and then that goes.
We can just flush a quantity and then it'll pump out a price for us.
Yep. So you can, to your heart's content, we can give you the model if you're interested in.
Yeah, I I I definitely am, because that's what the people want to do with their bill, you know? And we want to, we want to see if a family of, because I tell you, a family of four or a family of five, you know, they're you know, they're, they're using
Eleven thousand.
Fifteen thousand, fif, you know, I'm using fifteen probably.
And we'll know what percentage of your customer base uses what.
So we want to be able to, we want to be able to plug in different bills and see how they undulate as far as who's carrying who.
We could put a bill calculator on your website, so then a customer could put in their usage, and they'll say, your bill today is this. Under these new designs, it will be this.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that would be wonderful. And then these, and you, these models, you could have, again, when?
So I think, so the ones that do the sample bills for alternatives, that would probably be the summer. Just to give you an update of your costs and everything, that would probably three weeks. Yeah. Because we want to make sure we get that in for the budget, right? Because you're gonna need that to inform your budget.
Okay, going on.
And then it's up to you when you set an effective date to either change the rate structure, right? You could do it. Uh, you know, second quarter twenty twenty six, you could do FY twenty six, you know.
May I have one question I'd like to ask? Uh, and this is about the future. We talked about EDUs and water sewer manuals and things like that, but that's in the outer scope work based on your proposal. Is there anything that the town or the council can do right now that would, that would show up to be able to have a smooth transition after those first two phases to see if we can get that out of scope work going without a hitch?
Um, I mean, I can, we can talk best practices, and you can, we can talk about how do you do it now, and what does the industry do, you know, benchmark and things like that? That you could probably have for the twenty six, but in terms of actually having a new manual.
Well, I know we need to work with our partners and things like that. So should we start showing up those relationships now? Bringing people to the table, or do we wait until after you guys are done with phase two, so that we can have?
We'll take all the data now, whatever, we'll, you know, give us more data, and then we'll decide if it's useful or not. So give us the manual, we'll take a look at it, give us your EDU spreadsheets, whatever you have, um, because we can start informing decisions now.
Perfect, thank you.
Other, other questions, Kathleen?
I just have one question. Thank you for your presentation. Um, one of the issues that has been impacting the town is that capital connections, um, there are capital connections that some have identified, and yet they haven't been paid. Um, would you be able to control for the capital connection? Could you advise us where these capital connections haven't been paid and how that we could ensure compliance with the?
You have um, people who have connected but not paid?
Yes, we do.
Is it before a charge existed, or?
Yeah, well, they're using water, but they, they've never actually paid for the capital connection of the usage. Both commercial and residential.
Have to investigate that with staff to see which customers and what was the policy then, what was the fee then, I don't know. But we don't want to get into too many retroactive ratemaking of, you know. Uh, I don't know how they slipped through the cracks. I don't know what happened there. We can have those discussions, but.
Are there other questions or comments, Laura?
Just one final one, and thank you for your presentation. Um, I just, just want to put something in everybody's mind, um, because we are going to have to, it sounds like, um, set the rates again when we when we do our budget cycle, or we'll have to choose to keep the ones that are in place. So anything that can be done to help those rates, A, prevent from a very large drainage of our general fund, and B, be um, distributed in a way. So, so we had these rate increases that you just talked about, and some of our customers, the lower users, as you said, were significantly burdened by them, whereas other users maybe weren't as proportionally burdened. And so um, the idea of the twenty percent was just, it's easy, we can do it, we understand it, we, we want to provide relief. But in, in reality, um, some people are being relieved more, I guess, than the proportional hit that they, that others took. And so anything that um, the mayor could direct you to do, or that you could think of to suggest to the mayor that would help us set a rate structure that would um, be more appropriately proportioned um, to accomplish those two goals.
For the twenty percent, the immediate twenty percent?
Or, well, no, I mean, we, we set the twenty percent, we did say it was for two quarters. But now we're going to be doing four quarters, and if we, if we keep it, you have to assess the operational costs first. So, so I'm not gonna say how much or how hard our general fund's gonna get hit, but um, you know, drain, just draining it at the rate that I think it's gonna get hit at these rates is, is and actually a burden on, on the citizens of the town. So I would just suggest, or ask, I would ask, because I can't make suggestions, this isn't my expertise, but I would ask that um, if there is a way to um, consider those things and get some recommendations to us in time for our budget process. I'd know that the council would welcome it, or I would welcome it. One council person would welcome it.
Well, if, if I can chime in real quick. So I, I, I do think though, like, like Mike's kind of addressed it, like, in, in multiple different ways. So we would expect to have our expenses and our revenue generation, so we'll know how much it costs to run this. So then we have to say, based off the current rate schedule, are we positive or negative? And if we're, if we're negative, then, then there has to be an adjustment made. If we're positive, then we could in theory adjust down. So that's, I, I think that we will have that, like you just said, in a month, uh, you know.
I mean, I don't have, I don't have skin in this. I'm gonna give you the facts, what the totals are. You're gonna have the unfortunate, you know, policy goals of, okay, now what do we do with that information?
Exactly. But, but the, 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 so, so there was, there should be zero draining of the general fund, because there's, there, like, right now, there's no general fund being drained. So like, the idea, we would be break even moving into twenty twenty six. That's, that's what we would be setting, because of the tiers. Now what, I think Mike, like, I'm speaking for you now, but what you're describing is the summer slash probably late summer would be, you know, do we expand out in accordion the rate structure, and then something that we would have to physically go into the, you know, the, the water and sewer billing system and modify the rate structures. That would require an amendment to our, uh, our, our rate structure that we'd have to go in there, hence why he, he won't have that for us in time for the twenty twenty six budgets when we execute it. However, we could come back, whatever the council determines is an appropriate structure, we could come back and amend the structure, yes. Uh, and then I'm assuming we would, um, you know, we, it would just be depending.
Usually have to have public meetings.
Yeah.
There's like, yeah, we're gonna work backwards from the timeline, can't really rush it.
Right. But I, but to answer your, like, for twenty twenty six, we will be able to look at cost versus revenue and say, we're either a bust or go.
I can't, now, since you're doing this twenty percent, the perception would be it'd be odd, lower twenty percent, they say, oh, now we're gonna raise it thirty. We don't want that in two months, right, to change like that. So I'm assuming, I, I think you've made your uh, objectives crystal clear, so I have an idea of what we need to do. Um, we're not gonna come back and say, well, when they say the cost, maybe they're higher, but we're not gonna say, we recommend now, you just did twenty percent, now we recommend raising it fifty percent. That's, it's not gonna be helpful to any of us.
Yeah, and the, and the only ask that I had was, as we look at it, was, like, is everything that's in the revenue or in the expenses columns, are those like typical uh, that we would see and, and, and what should those be? And, you know, we talked a little bit before, I talked salaries, like, you know, salary.
Oh yeah, cut your workforce and do this, and that's how you can say, I'm not doing that. The numbers you give us, you said it, no. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna take the numbers, tabulate them, we'll, we'll give you an idea if it makes sense, but um.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate your being here, and uh, we're glad you're on board. Thank you. Um, give you a moment to escape. Unless you want to stay for the rest of the meeting. No, I don't believe it is. It was pointed out to me that I overlooked the very top of the agenda and skipped the public hearing for uh, the emergency um, charter amendment that's uh, being brought up, uh, being uh, voted on later in the meeting. Uh, and that's a public hearing on a charter amendment resolution, CAR twenty five dash oh one, a resolution of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, mending section C seven twenty three, purchasing and contract of the Charter of Chesapeake Beach to increase the authority of the mayor to expend monies without the approval of council from ten thousand to twenty five thousand dollars. An increasing amount of an expenditure that requires notification from five thousand to ten thousand dollars. Um, this was, I think, really generated uh, as a result of some of the work that we're doing right here. Uh, anybody have any comments on this? Questions on this? Anybody in the public care to comment on this?
No, I just know it'll help, it'll definitely help move the water park uh, progress along, I think.
Agreed, and I think that was really the motivating factor for doing it.
Yeah, I do, I only have one comment. I, I plan to uh, introduce an amendment, um, just to keep the notification at five thousand, just to keep, the idea is to keep the, the council abreast of, of what's going on with, with spend, with spending. Um, I'm absolutely fine with uh, raising the uh, the numbers as far as expenditures go, but the notification, um, I, I'll be introducing an, an amendment to keep it at five.
Anybody else got any comments on that? Then we'll close the public hearing that I should have done a while ago and move on to um, the next part of the agenda petitions and communications. Next is the town administrator report. Uh, go ahead, please.
Thank you. So the town administrator report um, submitted within the um, agenda package um, of note is um, some uh, major staffing changes. So since our last meeting, which was the work session, um, the town treasurer has resigned, so her last working day will be next Wednesday. Um, we, um, I'm oversight, seeing the transition to ensure continuity in uh, financial operations and um, have enlisted the support of both an HR coordinator and a fiscal consultant. Um, the HR coordinator is to make sure that we navigate the transition in a way that protects the town. And the fiscal consultant had already been um, engaged to come in to fill the gap between um, the beginning of the month and the end of the month, when we were originally um, expecting the town treasurer to return. Um, and now that uh, they will not be returning, this fiscal consultant will be helping us to um, maintain fiscal continuity and navigate the budget process. Um, and as I shared in the work session, or as I've shared before, um, this individual has over thirty four years of municipal uh, fiscal experience, um, and um, was, came highly recommended. And he began uh, working with the staff uh, on Tuesday. Um, outside of that, um, in addition to making sure that the town is protected during this transition um, from a HR standpoint, it, I'm also engaging this consultant to finalize the position description for the treasurer, so that that can be posted and we can begin recruitment efforts to replace the treasurer position. Um, other notable updates that you can find in the um, in the report um, pertain to the Safe Routes to School project and the Beach Elementary Tennis Courts MOU. So I'm happy to update everyone that we um, have a signed MOU from the mayor, and so the next step is for it to go back to um, the Board of Education where Dr. Council will sign. And we have, I have alignment with our town engineer, the superintendent of Public Works, the town, the county administrators and for uh, both uh, the outgoing uh, county administrator and the interim county administrator, um, and the Board of Education's um, director of construction projects. Um, we'll all meet together to navigate what the next steps look like, um, including engaging a procurement specialist who has just started with the county and has a lot of experience on how to properly navigate piggybacking contracts, which is how we intend to move the project forward. So that's one update, and the second is with Safe Routes to Schools. Um, we have the um, updated uh, RFP back from the town engineer. Um, it has gone through review with the town attorney. And the next step is to, is uh, for me to meet with our grant consultants um, to walk through and make sure that we have um, have addressed all of the required elements when it comes to that RFP, and this is important because their review process can take four to six weeks, and from what I have been told um, in the past, uh, there were um, attributes of the RFP that had elements that should not have been there, and that the town was informed should not have been there. Um, and so I really want to make sure that we can um, dot every I and cross every T so that when we send it back to them, it'll be a smooth review process on their end, and we can get it back out to bid. Um, so those are the, the biggest um, topics of note. Um, but the rest can be read in the town administrator report.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Do, actually. Um, for the tennis courts, it's not really a question, it's more of a suggestion. Um, when we get to the point where we're talking about uh, executing a contract, can we, I would like, I would, I would be uh, in favor of having pickleball court lines painted
Okay.
On there.
That's already uh, we'll be.
That's already in.
You want to make sure you guys have pickleball all over Chesapeake Beach. Well, it'll be interchangeable. So the lines will be there, so you can pull it out, but then uh, also, we're, with the um, with Jamie's uh, program over there, we're trying to make sure we have enough pickleball for everybody, like, nobody should have to wait to play.
I'm down for, I'm, I'm, I'm.
One of those, uh, just to clarify, one of the courts is gonna be identified as pickleball or both?
One of the courts is gonna be interchangeable.
Okay, thank you.
Well, okay, so typically, when you have a court that is both, you know, it's a tennis court, and it has the ten, has, has the permanent tennis net in there, and it just has pickleball lines drawn on both sides, and you can roll in your own net.
Right.
So I don't see why we couldn't do it on both courts. Because it doesn't interfere with any tennis. You don't need, you don't necessarily need a.
Tennis players fall differently.
Yeah, I think we would, we want to avoid the pickleball just taking over the court all the time.
Thank you. I am neither a tennis player or a pickleball.
So maybe we can make one of them pickleball only then.
Stakeholder, so um,
What is this?
It's a total of three courts. I think it's a win, and then uh, you know, if Jamie's gonna push more pickleball courts forward, I will be in full support of that with bells.
MOU is signed, so I, I've moved on, we're good.
Always do a West Side Story, pickleball players versus tennis players, gonna fight over them.
Do we have pickleball in the works over at Kellam's?
Uh, it was, but probably not.
Oh, no, yes, I, I will stop, you guys are going forward into our, our Kellam's updates.
All right. All right, one more question. Um, Samelia, the uh, the permit section here?
Yeah.
I see that there's one denied, and it's an after the fact deck. You have any additional detail on that?
I don't, but I can follow up with the, the town planner and get back to you.
And, and uh, I did have a, a question as well. Um, with regards to the, the town uh, planner and planning and zoning administrator, um, uh, can we get an, an update? I know we had talked a few sessions ago, prior at the beginning, about how important like the permitting process is and how ours is a little bit arduous and painful. That's been a big complaint that we've had. Uh, maybe just a perspective from her in the next update of, you know, how she assessed it, or like, does she have a plan to assess it and see if there's any best practices can be introduced? Uh, I don't know, I did see a note in here where you said you were introducing Zendesk. I, I don't know if she's gonna leverage that, or if that's purely just internal, but um, you know, I just would love to see what she's doing to approach uh, making the, the permitting process more user friendly for our residents.
Absolutely.
All right.
I, I have one question, sorry. Well, a, also, and a big thank you for all of that work. That's outstanding work, and I noticed you put everything on the tracker, and we talked offline about it, so um, that's great. Um, my question is on the planning and zoning report. And it says, the planning commission has recommended a minor change in the organization of one item of the Board of Appeals' critical area guidelines. You have been provided with appropriate materials to. You have been provided with appropriate materials to approve this change." And I don't see materials, so is, I'm imagining this is a copy paste report? Okay, so we would, of course, get those materials before it needed.
A follow up.
Or it would go on it, right, because one of the changes isn't minor in my opinion, so I would hope that we would get those materials and we can talk about it if we get them.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much and thank you again. Outstanding news today.
I agree. Even things forward. Next town treasurer report, uh, let's see, oh.
Samantha. The town treasurer.
You can't do anything to do, huh, Samelia?
Um, so I prepared the town treasurer report.
Yes, you did.
And the biggest, as you all know, you've heard the rate, the utility fund rate study is underway. In addition to that, the mayor and I have been added as signatories on the bank account, which had been delayed. And we are, we met with PNC yesterday to continue to get access that we have not had. And then outside of that, it was requested that we provide an outline of what the FY twenty-six budget preparation process will look like, and that has been included in this report as well.
Questions for the treasurer? Thank you, Samelia. Okay, Public Works.
Hi, Jay.
Hello, wait.
There's, there is something, a couple of things in my report that I wanted to just follow up on. I did reach out to S H A about their last crosswalk study because that came up here specifically Beach Elementary. And I know that includes down at Brownies Beach, Chesapeake Village. So two of those players are still there that actually gave the presentation to the prior administration. So I asked them to bring those findings and writings so we can look at it. You're, you're the governing body. You can kind of look at the findings and what they found then. We can look if there are any changes, which I do know at Beach Elementary, there were changes because there was additional sidewalk added with the new school. And that may meet a different rating in their criteria. But first things first, I've asked them to re-gather that report so I can share it with you guys. We'll look at it and then if that needs feedback, maybe we can directly do that. If not, I'm asking them to come back. We're all a new body, if you will, and present it. So we're all asking doable and realistic things of them, if that makes sense. So I just wanted to include that. And I'll, I'll speak to Jamie a little bit with planning and zoning because I've sat in a few of those meetings. I do know that Sarah has time dedicated here to work with applicants over issues and that's been functional and, and got some instant feedback that we can react to. And I had to drag Wayne in on a couple of those, which is, which is good because there's very unique areas in town and aspects. And it helps, if you get to a no, that's fine, then no's a no, but alternatives are maybe another way to go and look at it.
And she's, she is coming in every other week.
Correct, correct, and has open time to meet with, you know. I think it's a waste of her time to meet on little minimal things, but there are projects, like you said, where there's needs small town communication to make them work or find what is feasible. And I just wanted to mention that. Everything else is on my report. I was gonna say a little bit that's not on there about the water park, but I'll take any questions first on the actual report. Then we're good. So I want to, I want to focus on how we're moving forward with the water park and the plan. We just had our, our first committee meeting tonight, which I know Jonathan held and surprised me a lot of people there.
Think thirteen?
Yes.
I think there's interest.
Yes. So I just want to kind of run through a little bit for the, for the council mayor and then also the public. So we're still dialing in a more precise scope of work in certain areas. Obviously, the major concerns are the, are the sinking structures that are not supported, the failing plumbing and the rocks. That's in a nutshell, the biggest scope of work that we have to accomplish. There's no way around it. Not what we're going to do. I've met with a lot of local contractors, some out of the state contractors, so has Wayne. We've worked with prior staff, existing staff. I'm trying to capture every aspect of this project moving forward instead of just looking, hey, that's broke, let's fix it. While the plan is to accomplish the must be done fixes, we are also looking at improvements that make sense in specific areas. As they will be cost effective to do now, and this may very possibly be the only time to do them unless we plan a future shutdown. So as I engage in, in things that we have to fix, I want to see while we're in that area, does it make sense? Hey, we've removed this, let's fix this and, and move on. So you know, let me give you one example of that. So there's an area along State Highway two sixty-one. It's, it's the east side of the park that's sinking, been sinking and failing. It's one of the areas we're going to drive new piles to fix it. But while we're at that area, there's three, three deck drains that have failed. The propulsion pump plumbing has failed. And it's also the same area where we've always set up those canopies staff that people would rent little pop-up tents. So we know we have to go in there, remove the failing sidewalk. I know I have to fix the deck drains and I know I have to fix the propulsion pump. And we know we have to put piles to support it. But at the same time, instead of just putting that back, no one sees anything different. We're looking at building that infrastructure up against two sixty-one with a wall that will hold back the elevation change from State Highway to the water park, prevent future disruptions. Because there's always, we just heard tonight, they're going to be adding fiber maybe. But in the same aspect, we're going to build that wall, not just functional wall to hold it back. Incorporate that into the new fixed canopy is one of the options. So we're spending money for the needed fix, but at the same time, accomplish and conquer the staff putting up and down canopies every day, which was a liability and effort and it wasn't quite, you know, you rent a pop-up tent. This will be a very much, look like a designed effort, a nice little thing, different sizes and talk through the aesthetics and these are things we're going to work with the committee and, and kind of walk through. I just wanted to give that as an example of, we're not just going to go in there and fix it. I think with the amount of money we're going to spend, the, the public's going to anticipate, we want to see what's different, right? We don't want to spend all the money in the kitchen. Let's spend some out where they're eating, right? And so I'm looking at every aspect, what can we do? I have a lot of institutional knowledge of things like, I know that's a little ticking time bomb. If we're going over there, now's the time to fix it. That takes a lot to capture, try to price and incorporate, but we're doing that. The other thing is, we've have no work session for April and our meeting's on the tenth. So what I'm, what I want to do at that meeting is prioritize the four things that I know we have to kind of book and get moving forward. So obviously, there's a, there's a number that we all want to know, what is this going to cost to do? Because we have to weigh that number against the three proposals and the total. So I want to come back with Wayne. We've worked together. I plan to come in April and say, here is this number and here is the pretty detailed scope of work. If we do this, this is what it's going to cost. Let's be honest, give or take fifteen percent, right? Because you're talking a big number. Swallow that pill and I think we're all on the same page moving forward. Let's do this, because that's the way I'm going. I have to. It's going to involve a commitment of signing up some of these contractors now to commit their schedule, which may not start until May or June. The problem is they're, they're booking up now. So we'll, we'll come here, we'll have dialed in numbers on their part of it. We'll have the big, big budgetary number on all of it, but it may not have every little detailed scope of work of some of these things. But I'll have a definite within ten percent budget number and the scope of work. So I'd like to come in April, which is coming up quick, with four items. Number one is going to be one of the biggest costs is the support piles and the concrete work. So that doesn't just include the east side, it includes a lot of the west side. It's everything outside of the footprint of the pool, if you will. That's, that's going to be a big number. How many piles? The concrete that we removed in place and also some infrastructure under there that when we remove it, we'll fix while we're there. So we're going to have to have a hard number on that and maybe even a contractual commitment agreement. The second one is, the, the biggest aspect is the failing rocks, the cracking rocks, the slides need work. These confined spaced areas that I got to create and the ones that are already created, we have to make legal with the proper entrance doors and all that. The third is the octagon slash bathhouse renovation upgrades, which is a big number and that would include those new pavilions I just talked about. The fourth are the pump room repairs, which is, which is going to be a number. Not as big, but while we're there and doing this, we need to basically exchange a lot of thirty-year-old equipment there and get it up to grade. Those things I think will have hard numbers in April tenth. I'll, I'll let the council know what we need to sign up for contractually, what we got to sign, get these people booked. And then I'm thinking in May, don't get me wrong, you'll have the whole scope of work in April. You'll know what we're planning to do, but I might not have the dialed in contract signed. I'll have you a budget number, here's what we're doing. But just looking realistically, I want to accomplish these four things first. We can get these people online, get the commitment, and then move forward from there. Now that will involve, I've spoke with the mayor and, and prior and former staff. This is a giant project, a lot of moving parts. We're going to populate a calendar, we're going to populate a project tracker, we're going to share it with the council and public. We're going to pull this thing up here and say, here's our projects, here's where we're at, here is the predicted schedule, here's the real schedule, here's our budget up to date. Keep this thing flowing, keep the council mayor informed, keep the public informed with pictures, where we're at, what we're doing and try to be proactive and stay on top of it. When you really get down into the weeds and we start talking about, hey, we're in the bathroom and we've put in these fiberglass tub stalls and, you know, we're not picking out fixtures and things at this level. That's something as we get down the road, the committee and something we have time for. What I'm trying to do is expedite the must be duns as they go in order, get the big stuff done. And there'll be some hiccups, there'll be some things that we work through. Alls I can do is keep you informed. I can speak for all the local vendors. We're going to use local people as much as we can. It's cost effective, it makes sense. We have a reputation with these people and they have a, a reason, I'm going to say, to do right by the town, right? They've done it for years and they, and they're around here. Some of these vendors are coming from Texas, California, never worked with them. That's why I'm really, really, really going through this expectation, scope of work, what we're doing. It's, you know, it's, you can say fix the rocks. That's very hard to quantify and put on a menu. So we really have to work with them so that not only I know what to hold them to, because I can foresee, I've never worked with them before. It's going to involve daily inspections and daily make sure we're on the same page, because I don't want to get to midway through and we have different anticipations. But I also want the public and the council with pictures to have a realistic expectation. Hey, at the end of the day, what are these rocks going to look like? At the end of the day, what are these slides going to look like? Because alls I can do is feed it to you and you say, yep, that looks great. And then I can only hold them accountable for what they said. I'm giving you a lot of information, but basically April tenth, we're going to have those numbers, give or take. We can say, hey, that makes sense. Let's move forward. Here's what we're going to do and, and go from there. I'll take any questions. I think I can answer at that time or Wayne, if you have anything about that.
You, do you think it would be helpful to move the council meeting to the twenty-fourth? Or do you think you can get it done by the tenth? Is that even an option?
I would, I would like to say, let's get it done by the tenth, because two of these parties, you know, you think about someone that fixes water parks, right? They have until the park opens, then, then you can't do the work. So I would like to commit with, it's, it's a company fixture park or paddock, one or the other, whoever comes in, right? So we can commit to them, sign, and then that schedule's filled, because their part of it's going to be about three months, ninety days. And if we lose that opportunity, we've lost it for the year, right? I think the tenth is fine. But I appreciate that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we have, like, because it's, it's a huge decision, like, that's, the tenth is basically when we're going to decide what direction we're heading. So I want to make sure we have as much, you know, information.
Got you.
Other question?
Hey, Jay.
Hey, Eric.
I told you you wouldn't have that number today.
You're right.
But I do look forward to seeing it on, in, in April. The only question I have for you is do, do we have multiple bidders for all the different scopes?
We have multiple bidders for most. We will probably only have two. That'd be paddock pools and fixture park for one of the biggest projects. And that is the rocks, the slides and everything else. There's not a whole lot of people that do this.
That's good. And last time we talked, we only had one.
We did. Well, I will say, fixture park is a company that attends the Worldwide Water Convention. It's held in the U.S. every year, very reputable, has done this work. That's what I know and have read. Have I ever worked with them? No. Paddock built the park.
I thought they, they had said that they didn't want to have anything to do with it.
They did and we're re-engaging with them and giving them specific scopes and they may pick something out of those scopes that they will do. But even if they come back and say, you know what, we're not going to do it, they're, they're the only people I know that would even be able to do it. There are many people that can fix a patch in a fiberglass boat or do something on a low scale, right? But at this scale, I only know of two people. One is the people that built it, Paddock. And they actually got some of their product when they originally built it from the other person we're looking out of, fixture park. Those are two big numbers and a big scope of work, so I want to make sure it's very detailed, laid out and we all have the same expectation.
Any competition would be welcomed, for sure.
Agreed.
Thanks, Jay.
I want to, I want to thank you for all your hard work, but I also want to thank every member of the council and everybody that's actually participated in doing that, getting eyeballs on all the problems and so you understand exactly what we're, what we're working with here. So I want to thank all of you.
Yeah, I did. I also want, same thing, every member of this council went through that park. We spent some hours there and I appreciate that. Because they, obviously, if the more you look at it, you're making these decisions. And, and all of these parties that are coming in, believe me, I, I spent hours climbing around that place, places we didn't go with these contractors. Because I've understood it for twenty years and, and, and trust me, whoever comes in, I want them to have a real expectation of what I expect and where we're at. I don't want to, you know, oh, we didn't know this, we didn't know that. There's going to be some of that, but believe me, we climbed around places that the council didn't go.
And.
And I'm, and I, I believe that we're in an absolute unique position to actually accomplish this because of your experience and, and your knowledge of what goes on there. So I'm very grateful to you two, both of you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I promised Jay on Monday that I'd ask him, do you think this can be done? And so, answer the question.
I, I do, but I'll tell you this, I also think you could rebuild the Titanic if you had enough money, right? But I do think this is a feasible, I wouldn't be doing this level of research and work and everything. Don't, don't get me wrong, it's not going to be easy. And it's going to take a long process and time, but it can be done. It can be done.
And, and I actually think it's important to recognize that rebuilding the water park would be really a great thing to do for the town, but rebuilding the Titanic has no benefit to the town at all.
Agreed.
I, I did have two questions, or one question as a procedural one. Is there anything that we have to do? This is my first time with this aspect when it comes to just the, you know, it's, it's obviously not an amendment to a budget or anything, but it would be just signing up. Is there anything we have to be prepared for that we know of? I don't know.
I know the capital improvement line for fiscal year twenty twenty-five is very large. And I have not noticed that it got expended yet, so if.
But you just need like this, right?
You would disagree?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So that said, if you need to put somebody in place and you need us to fund it, it wouldn't require whole ordinance or anything like that. The money is, it's very ambiguously written as capital improvements, so that could be done.
Got you. I, what I'm thinking at this point to, to lock in a, a schedule, right, for these people and a commitment is it would not be, we need the whole payment. We, obviously, we're not going to pay them until the work's completed and we'll work out the payment programs, but it might be a mobilization fee that we have to pay upfront or a commitment to where they're contractually tied to us, but obviously not the full payment. So I think in April, May, we're going to be fine with what's there. As we get into June and obviously the next year, we'll have to start paying these things off. But I'm going to come to you and say, we need this. I'm going to ask you to figure it out. You got that part.
We have the earmark funds in the state budget that should be prioritized when it comes to expanding funds because we just don't know what's going to happen with the budget at the state level in FY twenty-six. And so I would say that that's where the priority would come from. And since it's already been allocated and earmarked, there's no need for budget amendments, my knowledge.
I just want to make sure Jay can run as fast as he wants to run. And then the second question might be, I think this is a Wayne question. Have, have we figured it out? Are we do, I'm going to sound silly, but are we doing the piles that spin? Are we doing the piles that spin and get filled? Does that make sense? Jay, Jay described them, and that's how I just kind of like I took it.
It makes sense. And they're, both are still on table.
Okay.
As of now, I am planning on doing bored, concrete filled piles because that's the most conservative method for your budgetary perspective. When we do more testing and we actually get out in the field, if I can change them to save you some money, we will.
Oh, good. Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, go ahead, Eric.
What do we have bidders for that?
I have, there will be bidders. I have information from a, a local contractor, local meaning Frederick, as local as you get in this, in this industry, that has given me price quotes for, on a per linear, linear foot and a per cubic yard basis.
Okay, that's for the
For your budget and your estimating. And then once you approve the project.
Is that for the pouring or for the drilling?
Yes.
Both. Okay.
Yes.
Are you familiar with Drill Tech?
Yes.
Would they be a potential bidder?
I think they're horizontal driller, not a vertical driller.
I'm sorry.
I think they're a horizontal driller, not a vertical driller.
I don't drill.
Horizontal goes this way.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. But that's true.
Maybe, maybe they will. They're not someone I'll talk to. I've used them for horizontal drilling.
Anything else on Public Works? Let's move on.
Just wanted to ask the the logo for the the water tower is the most uninspiring thing I've ever seen. Sorry.
That's why I approved it.
Oh, no disrespect, Mayor, but um, I don't know. Has that been finalized? Because, I mean, myself, I'm of the opinion, if it's, we all know this is Chesapeake Beach and CB, we know refers to Chesapeake Beach. I would just rather just paint the whole thing or have the town's words of Chesapeake Beach, but I, I think it's, I don't know, to my mind, it's very uninspiring.
Understood. And, and so both of these were last administration, last council. I have no desire either way. Don't care either way. But for clarification, the actual tower has already been painted. So we're not, so we're just talking logo or no logo. And there were, there was a rendering of the very same boat transom sign that's welcome to Chesapeake Beach. That's a boat transom, if you didn't know.
Well, just like on your shirt.
Just like on my shirt. It's supposed to be the back of the boat, says welcome to Chesapeake Beach. So they did that artist's rendering up here. And from the site distance where we would see it, it would be unlegible. So then we switched to the, you know, the sticker. And like I said, I just wanted to see the visual. This is what's on the table. We don't have to do it. We can do it. The, the contractor that came to paint the tower was on the hook to paint the logo. They did not. We withheld that funding. So if we don't spend it, it's a grant. We don't get it. If we spend it, we get reimbursed. I'm just sharing it with the council because it's up to you guys and you can give me feedback and however you want to proceed. And so it's not really, here I would come back. There's no work session in April. I'll come to April with an actual price for one logo of what we're looking at today, and you can wear it or name it.
Can they give us a rendering of like the lettering in like a navy blue?
They, they can actually do a lot. If you want to give some feedback through Samelia and, and suggestions, and I can get them to give you some more pictures. Keep in mind, the, the more detail, you can't read it. So it has to be almost that big if you're going to use letters. But there's a lot they can give you a simple rendering of.
And this you're going to actually see from quite a distance away because where you're going to see it is when you're driving down the road here and looking back up at the water tower.
And from fishing creek trail, right?
Correct, yeah.
Correct.
But the majority of people will see it driving by. And that black logo oval like that has been around for decades in the town.
Yes, it's the same sticker we have right here at our front desk. But like I said, I, I don't have an opinion either way. It was a pleasure of the last administration. I'll take any suggestions, get an artist's rendering and we can do it or not.
All right. Let's move on. Let's go to the, what I call the wastewater treatment plant. You're going to have a hard time teaching me anything else, Josh. Go ahead, sir.
So this month we went through, or this period, we went through all the preventive maintenance checks and services as indicated in our Antero asset management software. Routine inspections on the filters were performed with no issues identified. We did our quarterly UV bank cleaning. It's something we do every three months, pull each one of the banks out, fully hand clean them, soak them in a citrus grass bath, and inspect the units and put them back in service, replace any parts that are identified to be in poor condition. This time around, we just needed to replace two or five lamps. And no other issues were identified with those. We did our quarterly storm, stormwater site inspection as required by the state, where we take three samples across the plant of runoff coming from our paved areas and assess it for color, clarity, any oil sheen odor, floating solids, suspended solids, settle solids, or foam when we're agitating it. This is something that state requires us to do quarterly and record and document with our stormwater plan. So far today, we've never seen an issue with any of the samples perform or collected. One thing we did identify through the plant, we did identify a bearing vibration fault in our aeration blower, number one, the inlet bearing. We did some troubleshooting on that to confirm that it wasn't a sensor issue or a input-output issue at the controls. We did identify it was a bearing issue. I contacted the factory rep to get set up to get that bearing replaced. It's about three to four week lead time for the parts. We're probably looking at about, about probably another two weeks before we'll get those parts in. Then we can go ahead and schedule for the repair work to replace the bearings and then they'll have to do laser alignment on it to put that blower back in service. The, I reported that there was an issue with our number four effluent filter effluent valve. We had done some minor adjustments on the set point. Was insufficient, reached out to our instrumentation and controls representatives. They actually recommended be a little more heavy handed with the adjustment. We did a more substantial set point adjustment on there. Haven't had an issue since. So it looks like that solved the issue. That, that valve's been in operation close to ten years and operates seven times a day. So there's going to be a little bit of wear and tear on it over the years. It's just adjusting the variance that's allowable on the, the valve. We had a EPA cyber, cybersecurity assessment. We were provided a assessment workbook from a contractor from the EPA to assess our cybersecurity stance. We had a review of that assessment on the eighteenth. They provided recommendations for improvements to cybersecurity and some resources to help facilitate that. The recommendations ranged, or the assessment was looking in how our new information technology and operational technology components procured, staying up to date on existing and emergency emerging vulnerabilities, password and login protections, firewall protections, cybersecurity training and preparedness for cyber attack. They gave us a mitigation plan back based off of that assessment with some recommendations to what we could do to improve on them, and we're starting to work towards implementing those. Myself and Jay, with Public Works, were looking into getting lockout, tagout training from rural water. They offer to small municipalities training sessions. We're looking into hosting it here at town hall on May twenty second. If we're able to get other local rural water registered municipalities to participate, then the training will be at no cost to the town. So free is good to me. We had Kelly Generator coming and do semi, semi annual service and a load bank test for our generator. Load, load bank test was successful, saw no issues with the generator and no other issues were identified through their regular service check. And during this period, we had to use a shellfish tank, I should say, three times because right now we're in split flow just from the rain we had tonight. February sixteenth, we had to go in split flow due to, I believe it was point nine nine inches of rain and on March fifth, or one point two two inches of rain. This is a issue we see every time we have heavy rains this time of year, and we do have identification of who the larger contributors are, and we're working to resolve that. So that's all I have right now, aside from what's in the report. So if y'all have any questions.
Has there been any, any update about regulation concerning PFAS?
There has not been any update. The only ones right now that have really gotten any information from state on PFAS is the solids handling personnel. And I actually have a section on here towards the end where we're working with Sinagro. They were asking about our PFAS levels, and so we did some recent testing. In two thousand twenty two, we had done testing and we identified twenty parts per billion of PFOS and seventeen parts per billion of PFOA in our solids. Most recent tests that we had done, we had one point four parts per billion of PFOS and less than point seven eight parts per billion PFOA. So our levels are way down. So in regards to costs and everything for solids handling, we don't foresee that there should be a significant change on that for how can be, what we have hauled out of the plant. But the only regulations, like I say, it's gone out to solids handlers for how it's used for land application.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Josh, very thorough report as usual. I just had one, one question. You had said that there is a significant increase in the number of rags and now trash, and you noted T-shirts. And I wondered if the public safety announcement that has gone out through the town, you, obviously you haven't seen any reduction.
We have, no, we have not. And what we're seeing more noticeably recently is like ripped up T-shirts, shop towels, like the red shop towels, not like the paper, almost like a paper towel type. So it leads us to believe that it's coming from automotive shops or boat shops, something along that line. We're trying to capture some of that stuff. So maybe we can say, hey, here's something we got and somehow or another, maybe track downwards, coming up, coming from, say, maybe have some further education.
Any reduction in flushable wipes?
Not that noticeable.
We'll have to post it again.
Yeah, we're, we're still cleaning three, four times a day on that bar rack.
Other questions for Josh?
I had a question about, yeah, just real quick with regards to the training program. I know when we met in person, you said that, like, we were trying, you were trying, basically, you know, a lot got to get everybody else up to speed, kind of, so you're not a single point of failure. Are you looking at building out like a full on training program that in addition to water and sewer state requirements and regulation requirements and the trainings that you talked about that everybody, the test, I remember specifically, you said there's a test that everybody's got to take. You like the hands-on maintenance training, the electrical, all the, the other work. Are you building like an, like a, for lack of better terms, like an upgrade training type program where everybody gets certified in your eyes or, so you'll have that or?
That is something that I've looked into a little bit. I haven't gone too far down the rabbit hole on that yet. It's just I've been trying to get everything else caught up within the plant. And it's trying to find a way to get the different skill sets, electrical, controls, motors and pumps, laboratory, stuff I get to where I can have a skill set that would match along the same level. So it's not like, okay, these guys have decided to go controls. Well, their work is going to be a thousand times more complicated than the person that does just pumps and motors. So try and figure out a way to weigh that out to where it's reasonable. But that was something I was looking at that, once we get operators, they aren't stuck just as an operator one. We have in the matrix that we have developed, an operator one, operator two, operator three. My thought was to the most, the easiest comparison I have is to say the Navy where you have different rates. You have an electric, electrician mate controls, whatever, going along the line, but something along that line where we could have a electrical operator, controls operator, pumps operator, so they could either specialize in one skill set or broad training across a skill set and they meet certain requirements to make it to that next step.
Okay. Yeah, I'm a big believer in cross training and then I, I look at both you and Jay and I say, you know, the town's experienced a handful of single point failures in the last few months, so try, just trying to call out like that would not be good in your guys' sector as well. Thanks.
Thank you. And, and I'm, you know, I, I feel very blessed that we have you and you, that all of you that are so thorough and the, the time that you took to show the council through various elements is invaluable because this council is more knowledgeable than any council in, that I know of in the past as far as these critical operations of the, of the municipal government. So thank you for putting that on and council, thank you for being such good participants. All right, let's move on to the engineers report. Wayne?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In my report, I have an update on Richfield Station. I'm reviewing public works agreements that were last updated in twenty twenty one to figure out the current values and what we do there to move that forward. As Samia also said, we talked about today, SRTS went back to with the revised format. It's going to go back to S H A here shortly. That was completed. In Kellam's Field, we're working with Jay and the contractor who's doing the playground installation to get that finished up and get that moving forward. Again, Jay told you about the water park. We met, we've gone through some ideas of what to do there. And I'm working with drilling contractors to get ideas of cost for, for the screw piles and or auger piles. In the water reclamation plant, I have final drawings from McCrone to review, which I will get to in the next week or so. They're, they're, they're progressing with their M D E permit. I'm not holding them up. M D E is reviewing as the same time I am. Old base side water tower, we'll come out and do that. I'm going to suggest that might be our final testing. We'll see what the results are in April. We've been testing that for a while. Just make sure there's no settlement there. They put a question about it. We haven't seen any, so we may just do that on an annual basis instead of quarterly at this point. And then seventy-five thirteen B Street, worked with Jay and the contractor and Sarah to work through some challenges there for a permit. I think we had a good meeting there the other day on that one. And we're working on U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is the last one to confirm a meeting with us for the floodgate and pump station at Seagate. So we'll get get back with them. I met with them today. They will get back to me in the next ten days to give us a date for that. Any questions?
Any questions?
Updating the public work.
You say you're updating the public works agreements in Richfield Station. When do you expect that to be final?
So the way that works is because of the age of the agreements, the agreement has in it a provision which, which requires or allows us to require an updated cost estimate. Obviously, if costs haven't gone down in the last four to five years. So as we update, I'm asking the owner developer to update the costs for current values so we can renew them. I shouldn't say renew them. We should re-up them, get them accurate so they can move forward. Timeframes will be up to them. We did this once before in twenty twenty one. It took quite a bit of time, a month or two. But I have spoken to the developer and he's ready to move forward. He wants, wants to work with us. So that's what we're working on.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead, Eric.
For the water park, do you know how many piles we're talking about?
Rough estimate, a hundred and twenty.
Did you have something, Josh?
Yeah, the, the, are we going to have to take boring samples before we pile?
So the way the piling works, we, we, we have two borings, which we did previously just to get an idea what was there. The way that works is yes, when the contractor comes out, he will have to do a test, a test bore and a test pile, at least one, if not three. So that, that will occur when he comes on site.
The question was raised in the committee meeting earlier. Can we, is it possible to get the boring samples from the community center or any other projects that went on around the area to use those instead?
Given the age of that material, I don't think any contractor would rely on it. I wouldn't recommend he does.
Thank you, Wayne. Time to move on to the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department. Please come forward. Did I skip something? Oh, I skipped the share. I was wait a minute. Man, it takes the village to keep me straight.
But this is a rivalry right here.
I'm sorry.
It's a race.
February was nice and quiet, a little graffiti incident, a little underage driving arrest, but.
How underage?
Uh, fifteen is, his parents went out for the evening and he took the other car out for a ride and we got him. Yeah, his parents, parents were not happy, but I think they'll, they'll take care of it.
Yeah. Love that story. I never did anything like that.
Yeah.
Any, anything else you wanted to share?
No.
Council, any questions? Yeah, definitely.
I do, I just have a Ferris Bueller state, no, um. Richfield Station, you were gonna, they had requested la, at the last meeting that, uh, increased patrols. Have, have you done that?
Yes, uh, we're in there all the time, especially, uh, near the entrance to the railway trail. So, yeah, personally I do.
So when you say all the time, you mean daily, twice a day?
Exact number on it, but I, I could probably pull that data and get it to you, but daily for sure. How many times a day? I, I, I wouldn't say, but at least a few times a day.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is that a speed limit sign that, that's supposed to be tracking data? Is that in place yet? Have we captured any data from that? Is that you or somebody else? That's you?
Yeah.
That's us. So we have the sign and we're just have to pick where and what we wanna do with it. This is, this is from the last administration. We just purchased it. We have the software and the data, so we need to choose a counselor, staff, where to implement it.
Does anybody know the most egregious?
My Richfield.
I think the original intent was as you're leaving Richfield Station headed towards that traffic light where the last.
Down the hill?
Yes. Um, and we actually placed the post and we can implement it there if it's the. Pleasure of the council and mayor, see, see what we come up with.
What do you think? Get started?
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say down the hill, leaving the neighborhood or maybe Sandsbury.
I think, uh.
Cox Road is good too.
I think, um, headed into the town. On two sixty from, from the light at Richfield Station, from the light at Sandsbury, two sixty into the town.
Well, the only thing I think is we, we'll have to get permission from the state if we're gonna do anything on a state road. Um, I know we can implement on the town, but. We can, we can talk that internally and figure it out.
Thank you.
I got, I do have one more question. Uh, well, two questions, actually. I wanna go back to this, uh, maverick you got. Uh, driving his parents' car around. How did you identify him? What made you pull him over?
Uh, he was driving at night with no headlights on.
Bingo.
He deserved it.
Yeah.
I agree.
He couldn't see him as.
All right.
Right.
And the other question I have is. Two twenty-seven, twenty-five Fish and Creek Apartments, death investigation, no foul play, suspected death report. Um, was this, can you give us a little bit of detail here?
Uh, that's, uh, someone with a very extensive medical history, so, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Now, the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, I apologize for my mix-up.
Problem. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to address you this evening. Uh, we had a very busy month, a hundred and sixty runs. For the department for that month, uh, predominant number of call, we had forty-four call, fire calls in Chesapeake Beach. Uh, a couple of those were working fires and sixty-five medical emergencies. So it's been, uh, it's been a pretty hectic time period. And, um, we're just, uh, we're just, um, honored to serve.
Well, thank you for your service.
Oh, no problem.
Any question?
Well, no, I just wanted to say thank you for being here. No one's been here for a while and we made comment that we would like to see. Someone, um, represent the fire department that, uh, we all benefit from and enjoy. So I appreciate you being here.
Yes, sir. We're gonna make a more concerted effort. We heard your, we heard your request.
Okay.
Good job, Eric.
Somebody watches.
I just have a question.
For being here. But it, it's really, it's really great to have you. And let us know what we can do to, you know.
Uh, your generosity is much appreciated. So I relayed to the fire chief, uh, I'm John Tippett. I'm one of the deputy chiefs. And the P I O for the department. So, uh, you'll see one of us.
That's excellent. Definitely.
Thank you, Chief. Um, I just clarify for me on your report, the, on the second page, the last. Um, I guess category is other, is that non-emergency? Is that what that is the?
Oh, the other non-emergent calls for twenty-one? Yes, ma'am. Now, those would be, um, somebody calls and they, especially on the medical side. Uh, they may have, um, may just need a lift assist. They just need to get up off the floor.
In the tree.
Uh, they could be. Yeah, something of that nature. Uh, those were the, those were the medical, that's on the medical side. Uh, the calls on the fire side, uh, they're, they're broken down into those two general categories. So if those other non-emergents are on the EMS side, those would be for the people that probably don't, probably need lifting assistance getting off the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for your patience too. This is, uh, run a little longer than we normally do. We had a lot to cover. All right, time for the mayor's report. My report is only four pages long, so I don't think this will take very long. Um, I went to, I attended the, uh, March eighteenth county commissioner meeting. Our last, or the last Tuesday meeting with, uh, where the tax differential, uh, for the coming fiscal year was approved. Uh, the rate and, and I was with Mayor Mike Benton from North Beach. We appeared together. The rates for the coming fiscal year, uh, the county rate, uh, out of the municipal, out of either municipality. Is point nine six seven dollars per one thousand of assessed value. Uh, in Chesapeake Beach, um, that rate for the county drops to point six three one. Uh, uh, dollars, um, per one thousand assessed value. And the town is, um, zero point two nine seven seven per one thousand. So the total for the town. Is zero point nine two eight seven per one thousand, which is actually three point eight three cents less. Uh, than if you're out of the municipal borders. And this is the same rate for both North Beach and Chesapeake Beach. The purpose of this offset is that the town provides services that otherwise the county would be providing. That the county doesn't have to provide. So anyway, that, um, encounter with the county commissioners, uh, and with Mayor Benton. And I went very well. Um, so I'm pleased to report that. Um, we talked about safer routes to school, but I think we did, but the M O U has been sent to State Highway for approval. So that's a good news, good news. Uh, been working with, uh, Jay. Uh, and others on the Miller Loveless Park, the ARPA funds are being used for this project and it's nearing completion of the first phase. And if you haven't been back there lately, go take a look because it's looking really pretty good. It's exciting to see that happen. Um, I had the, uh, honor to be invited to, I had this invitation. Uh, from, uh, Quinn Lineberry, uh, who I think is your neighbor, Jamie. Is that correct? I, I think so. Uh, anyway, uh, he, uh, became an Eagle Scout. And so this was at Saint Anthony's Church. So I was invited to go to that and that was, it, it, there was a lot of folks there from. Uh, other jurisdictions as well, but it was a real honor to be there. And not only is he an Eagle Scout, but his father is, is an Eagle Scout. And my son was, I think, one, my son is almost, uh, fifty now, but he was about this close to becoming an Eagle Scout. And he got, he turned eighteen before he got the last thing done, so he didn't actually become it. But at any rate, um, that was a great thing. Um, I am really, um, happy. That all of you took the opportunity to view water park. And to see exactly what Jay's been talking about. And I'm, I'm really grateful that you understand so well what needs to be done. So, um, I mean, this is just a great amenity for the town and, and as you know, and, and others that have been here for a while. When it, when the park was in operation in Maryland, you certainly know, it was a wonderful amenity for the town. So I'm excited to see it, uh, come back to life in a year. And I'm, I'm glad we're taking the time, but I'm also really pleased that all of you took the time to really see what we're talking about. So when we're sitting up here, you know, I mean, you've got, you've had eyes on it now, so you know what we're talking about. Um, we changed, we're changing the June council meeting. We, we did change, now you, you may have updates to this. Here's what I wrote this afternoon. This has been a moving target, but the June council meeting, we're gonna change from the nineteenth of June to the twenty-sixth. Because of the Juneteenth holiday. Oh, and I guess, oh, you say we've moved it to the twelfth? Okay, we've now moved it to the twelfth, uh, because the twenty-sixth is the day. The following at the M M L convention in Ocean City. So we figure everybody might be burned out. So, all right, we're gonna move that to the twelfth. Let me make a note of that, so I'll come here on the right day. And, um, so, um, that was that. Um, and I had a meeting with a developer of Richfield Station to discuss completion of the subdivision. And all I can say right now is an introductory meeting after not having seen him for about ten years. And, uh, there's, there's more to follow, but he seems to be interested in moving that forward. So I think that would be a great thing. Um, next, on the agenda, we're nearing ten o'clock. That's hard to believe. Uh, let's vote, have a, take the vote on the charter amendment, uh, C A R twenty-five dash one, a resolution, Town Council, Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. Uh, amending section C seven twenty-three, purchasing a contract of the charter Chesapeake Beach, increase the authority of the mayor. To expend monies with the, without the approval of council from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand, increasing the amount of the expenditure that requires notification. From the council, we, to, from five thousand to ten thousand. If you want to, uh, introduce an amendment to that area.
Move to amend the, um. Just last line. Just strike from.
And.
And, uh.
Is there a second to that amendment?
So.
I'm sorry. Oh, yes, or pay.
Required notification.
Sorry, required notification from, uh, ten to five, intent being, um, the intent being here to eliminate. All, uh, reference to changing the required notification from five to ten.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Discussion or?
What? Question?
Yeah, what, what does the, um, notification entail? Is that just Amelia emailing all of us and saying, hey, we spent this money?
It would be reflected in the mayor's report at the.
All right, let's, uh, vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, the ayes have it. Uh, any further discussion on the amended, uh, charter amendment? C A R twenty-five dash one. All in favor of the amended, uh, resolution, C A R twenty-five dash one, say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Okay, report of officers, boards and committees, planning and zoning committee. Is there a report that should, we have a? Okay. It's here somewhere. Here it is. Me, have you, if you all have had a chance to look at the report, is there any comments or questions on the report? That we can feed back to the chair? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item. Board of Appeals. Uh, essentially the same, right? To get out here. I don't see it.
I actually did watch the board of appeals meeting. Uh, it sounds like they're getting close to a resolution on that.
Okay, I don't see, uh, a report, so at any rate, we'll move on.
I think they're meeting more thirty-first.
They just met three days ago.
Yeah, they met on Monday, but they're meeting again on the thirty-first, I believe, at six thirty.
Okay. All right, next is C box. Uh, we have a report from C box. Has everybody had a chance to, uh, see the report? Any questions or comments? I'm glad to see that program flourishing after all these years. I kinda had a hand at getting that off the ground way back when.
On bacon.
Um, green team. We have a green team report. We're gonna dig that one out. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? I think we know somebody that could answer any questions that you might have.
The Rain Barrel was a great success. It was full capacity. The only, the only, uh, wrench in it was that, uh. That was the day of the storm and the power kept going on and off. So we had to leave early because they were afraid of an electrical fire. So. That was fun.
Great. I'm glad that that's going.
And it worked great to have the, the barrels at the water park. Thank you, Jay. That was easy for people to pick it up.
Any questions? Okay, let's move on. It's getting late. Uh, Kellum's, uh, revitalization committee, we have their report. Yeah, if you've had a chance to look at that, anybody got any questions or comments?
Yeah, uh. Pickleball exclusive courts, are they in the works?
Exclusive, yeah.
Um, well, I'm, I am going to meet with, uh, Jay at some point in time, hopefully next week. Uh, and then there's definitely just some conversations that I had with Jay and, and Wayne with regards to placement. And, uh, there are some questions that came out of the, the group of which land we own and kind of like some with things that we need to figure out. But yes, pickleball courts, uh, dedicated ones were in the discussion. So I know there's a handful of people will be happy. Um, but we're also looking at creating a tiered, uh, probably like a multi-year phase because obviously we're going into a budgeting cycle. So, uh, probably not gonna ask for everything upfront. Uh, it's probably not realistic, but talking with Jay, like what can we accomplish in this upcoming year? In addition to what we're doing with the water park and then, um, what does this look like in two thousand twenty-seven? Um, so, but we're moving and moving and grooving and hopefully by the next month or so, uh, we'll have a, a request to the council to take some action.
I do have one question.
There's a kitchen.
Fences.
Can we take down the fence?
So, okay, so that, that actually came up during the discussion and that's something else I wanna talk with Jay because there was actually. Quite a bit of pushback on keeping the fences up from the group, uh, in the sense of, um, wildlife. Um, there was a handful of questions that I need to just talk with Jay to understand and then either send it back and say, here's the responses or I, I, I don't have a. I don't have a dog in the fight either way. I'm, I'm with you. We talked about that before of like, let's just get rid of them. But if there is a reason, the solution that kinda came up in the discussion was. Maybe we just have more access points instead of the front slash the, the, the far back right one. But, um, again, it, we'll, we'll, we'll present multiple options. Um, I don't know, I don't know if wildlife is, I know they put the little things out there, but. I don't know what, I don't even know what animal they are, but.
But I have an observation and comment about the fences, uh, having, um, a daughter. Who's been cheering for a long time for the Bucks, um, and we've traveled around to different, uh, fields. Tri-County area, um, a lot of the, uh, football fields and the parks there, they have a fence. Just tightly around the football field. Instead of fencing in this larger area, it just fences in the football field. It might be an option that's kind of a compromise position.
We'll take it for, uh.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we'll move on. Um, next is the Kellum's, uh, revitalization committee. Oh, okay, that's that one, right? Sorry, I was, I missed. Okay, Twin Beach is opioid abuse.
Um, just real quick, Twin Beach opioid abuse awareness is no more. It is now under Twin Beach Community Health Coalition. It has expanded from just opioid abuse awareness.
Yay.
Uh, top three, uh, voted on, uh, initiatives will be mental health, suicide prevention and opioid awareness. Um, so right now we're gonna be going into a rebranding phase. Um, so right now, we're gonna be going into a rebranding phase. We've, uh, figured out our art projects for the future. We've already started talking with North Beach about moving forward under the new name. And, uh, we'll be coming up with some new stuff to talk about next meeting.
Any questions?
Also, the, uh, the talk to the town administration administrator about the thirty thousand dollars that is rolled over. So we don't have to worry about losing that money, that funding going forward.
Thank you.
Will there be, um, I see you're getting a new logo. So will we get to see that before?
Yes, you will. Uh, we'll have three different ones made up. We're gonna choose which one is gonna be and then we'll bring it in. And, uh, website presence, social media, new logo, those things will happen because it's really about, uh, making sure branding and marketing is really in place. Since it's about outreach mostly, uh, so yeah, we'll definitely have those things for you guys to see everything.
Okay, and the name change was to reflect, uh, broader your interest and impact.
Yes, definitely about broadening the impact, being more expansive. And then we can also not be pigeonholed with anything now. We can deal with anything from gambling addiction to diet and exercise. So that way we can be a health coalition for everything, which also gives us a chance to have more stakeholders and be able to help with other things like sports events and stuff like that. So we just flourished it out a little bit.
Great idea.
Thank you.
Really good. Moving right along, the, um, Walkability Community Committee. Have a report. Anybody have anything to add to that written report?
I just have a, a few comments.
Okay, good.
I did make a four-page report, so I won't go over the report. Um, so, um, as I said last, being the Walkable Community Advisory Committee has not had a meeting, but the committee report outlines preliminary work that has been done and is necessary for determining the scope of opportunities that the WCAG can pursue with some expectation of success. And, um, I would like to emphasize the importance of successful negotiations with developers, especially in the current political climate in which there is an emphasis on reducing federal spending on open space and preservation. Um, we need our open spaces for the projects that matter most to met, to residents. And, um, I look forward to partnering with the council and the mayor on, uh, what we can get done on walkability. Thank you.
Couldn't agree with you more.
I had one question. Um, I read the word requested like quite a few times in the report. Um, is it like, are all of these the ones that you're, you're just trying to get a baseline of assessment of where we are versus, because I'm, I'm thinking back through like, we've literally been here for fourteen hours, uh, and there's, uh, quite a few things going on. So I just, you know, from a capacity to who's getting all these requests and like how you're managing those.
Um, uh, do you have specific, um, requests that you're talking about? Uh, a lot of, I, I've requested that the town planner update some mapping.
Okay.
And so that was, you know, uh, if I request and I don't have an update, then I've requested. I think Samelia gave some pretty good updates about, um, the Safe Routes to School project.
Okay, I'm, I'm good, yeah.
Uh, yeah, if I've requested and you don't, that, that's as far, that's all I can do at some, at some level. I don't have control of certain things, so, um, that means.
Um, we have a listing for the Water Park Committee. We kind of already beat that dead horse. But does anybody have anything else they want to say about the Water Park?
I was very happy with the, uh, the turnout on that. They had some good questions, some good feedback. And, um, I think we have a lot of good work ahead of us. Good group of people.
I, I agree. And I'm, I'm really, uh, encouraged by the engagement by both the council and citizens of the town. Really, it's really, uh, encouraging.
Can we back up just really quickly? I wanted to.
Please.
For the, I do have an update about the, um, sustainable community designation. So, um, two members of the Green Team met with, um, some staff this week and they are working through the application because it will expire. The expiration is coming up, but we're currently current.
Okay, and, and the expectation is that we expect to get that in on time?
Yes, uh, we expect to get it in on time. And right now, we're like, we qualify as bronze, but we actually have doubled the points that's, that's needed for bronze. And so part of what, um, we'll be working through is figuring out how we can get to that next level of designation.
Okay, and my calculation was it wasn't gonna be due till twenty twenty-six. Is it due in twenty twenty-five?
It's due in twenty twenty-six, but the, we want to be prepared for that, right? And also, and also engaging in how, uh, if there are activities that we can get credit for that allow us to move to that next year. So, um, because it was listed here as a requested thing, I wanted to make sure that I gave you that update.
That's, that's fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Uh, next item on the agenda, Water and Sewer Manual Supplement Appeal Process, and Samelia is gonna handle that.
Yeah, this is just carryover from the work session. Um, it's unfinished because this is, uh, gonna be part of the, um, product of the, uh, engagement with NuGen and the work that they're doing.
Moving right along under new business, um, we need to move a couple of the council meetings coming forward due to schedule conflicts. The first one is the Town Council. You consider moving the April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five Town Council Meeting to April tenth, twenty twenty-five at seven PM and the reason for that.
Holy Week?
Holy Week, okay.
And then there would be no work session that.
Work session at all that month is, so is there a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion to move the April meeting to the Town Council meeting to the seventeenth, to the tenth from the seventeenth.
Thank you.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Okay, and the second one is, um, to move, consider moving the, um, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five council meeting to the, the twelfth, June twelfth. Uh, and that is the, because the nineteenth is the day after the MML convention, we assume that's people with.
Nineteenth is Juneteenth, the holiday.
Oh, okay, well. Oh, okay. All right, at any rate, Juneteenth, okay, yes. So at any rate, to move that to the twelfth, is there a motion?
I make a motion to move it.
Okay.
Got a question.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, does that mean, is work session also canceled on?
Work sessions are not in the code or the charter, so you don't have to have work sessions. They're typically there because we've had a lot of things to work through. So ideally, maybe by that time, we won't have as many things to work through. But that's not something you need to vote on. It's just a decision the mayor makes regarding the work session.
Well, uh, okay, but we tip, I, I believe we have, uh, a standing schedule of the second Tuesday of each month.
Do you have a tentative schedule? Yeah.
Okay, so, but we would not have that in June with this change?
Not unless you.
I just want to be clear, so, so I can adjust my calendar, that's all.
Well, I, I would, I would say like, I think that's something we do have to think through as we get in, because that's the, the final month before the budget goes into effect. And that is the month that we would, per the schedule, we'd be voting on it. So, I mean, as long as we're, we're trying to schedule vacation, but, uh, as long as we're on track with that, I'm, I'm good with it.
Well, that is the second, the tenth is the second Tuesday of that month? Or the twelfth, okay? Okay. So, yeah, that's just my question. Are we having the work session on the tenth or not?
I think we should decide when it gets closer, maybe.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, yes, for now, it's still there.
If we're voting on the budget, I would.
Uh, yeah, I would keep it until we.
Fine, I don't care. I just want to know the answer.
Offline to decide what that date would be, because otherwise you would have a work session on Tuesday and then two days later have a council meeting. So just consider that.
Okay, well, on the motion to change the, uh, June meeting to the twelfth, uh, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So the ayes have it. And if we need to schedule a work session, we can do that, so. All right, time for public comment. Anybody have anything to say? It's Buckingham. How are you? Thank you for your patience.
Since we're gonna be discussing the Water and Sewer Manual with the new company that's coming in to evaluate, um, Mr. Evans, um, nineteen eighty-five was the original Water and Sewer Manual, but then it got changed in twenty twenty, okay? In nineteen eighty-five, there was no flat fee in that situation. Either the, and the capital connection definition for that one in nineteen eighty-five, back during the work session. Actually, capital connection fee in nineteen eighty-five was for Jay's system to be put in and dug up the street. If there was no digging in the street or a box put in your front, you didn't have a capital connection fee. All right, the other thing, in the new manual, EDUs have been talked a lot about. Well, in the new manual, it's kind of funny because EDU definition, which is the manual we're going by, is to be paid prior to the in, issue of a zoning permit. Unless otherwise approved by the town. And it's an equipment, again. So if you had a zoning permit, you would have already paid for your EDU. We keep repaying over and over and over again in our flat fee. Mine is three hundred dollars. My EDU fees are more than my water bill and my sewer bill put together. My water bill's only forty-six dollars a month. I barely use eighteen thousand gallons. Eighteen thousand gallons. I do have an apartment. But I also have five people total. I only use eighteen thousand gallons. But I'm getting charged three hundred dollars for EDUs, which by your bylaws shouldn't be given to me because we don't have no flat fee in the manual. And the EDU was only to be charged one time. So we need to really look at our manuals and really go over them because people are being charged things that they don't necessarily should be charged. And I also sent you an invoice for sixty-four thousand, sixty-four hundred dollars. Payable due within ten days of me sending it to you. Did you receive it? For payment that was, you collected from me that I shouldn't have been paying for fifteen years.
We received it.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. And a lot of the town residents should be sending their refund payment into you too. Because they're all due refunds, just like I am. Because you charged us for things we shouldn't have been charged for. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Debbie. Is there anybody else that has any public comment?
Motion to adjourn.
Heard a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, does that mean it passed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much for a very lengthy but very informative meeting. Appreciate your participation. No, we got work to do.